Okay, good morning. It's good to see so many people this morning here with us. It's our weekly board session for the Marion County Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, July 28, 2021. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so feel join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have nobody signed up. Noni, as Alex said, Noni has signed up for public comment. Thanks, Brenda. So we'll move on to our presentations this morning. We have Katrina here from our Health and Human Services Department to talk about COVID. Welcome.
Thank you. Katrina Rothenberger, Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services. As of today, July 28, we have a seven-day case average of 59 cases per day. Our case rates are increasing in Marion County. Between July 11 and July 24, there was a 37% increase in Marion County compared to July 4 through July 17. And the state also experienced an increase of 52.2% in that same time period. The bulk of the cases are coming from the central Salem, northeast Salem, Brooks, south Salem, and Kaiser zip codes. And we've been getting quite a bit of questions about what's fueling the recent rise in cases. We're seeing more like barbecue, summer activities, and other parties. And the variants have always been a concern. However, this Delta variant is 60% more transmissible, so we're seeing that people are becoming infected more quickly. The viral load in the respiratory tract is much greater with the Delta variant, and it is poised to become the dominant variant here in Oregon. As far as hospitalizations go, we are currently monitoring 29 Marion County residents in the hospital. In Region 2, which is Marion, Polk, Yamhill, Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln, there are 100 staffed adult ICU beds, 88 are occupied, and 12 are available. Out of the staffed non-ICU beds, there are 758, 698 are occupied, and 60 are available. I've been asking around a little bit about hospitalizations in our region, and some counties are reporting that there are some staffing shortages. And also, just locally, I haven't heard of staffing shortages, but just, you know, they're tired, like, need a break. So, just anecdotally, here in Marion County. We do also monitor breakthrough cases. Last week, we had 51 new breakthrough cases. Thirty-three of the breakthrough cases received the Pfizer vaccine, 10 received Moderna, and eight received Johnson &amp; Johnson, which brings us to a total of 303 breakthrough cases. And last week, the breakthrough cases accounted for 21.6 of our overall case count, which was up from 15.6% the previous week. For vaccinations, 68.5% of Oregonians 18 and over have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. 64% are fully vaccinated. And in Marion County, 63.4% of those 18 and over have received at least one dose of the vaccine, and 59.2% are fully vaccinated. We've been working with our partners to continue providing access to vaccines. Some of us attended the Fairgrounds closing ceremonies for the Mass Vaccination Clinic last week, and vaccines will still be available, but more readily in provider offices, mobile clinics, and pharmacies. And we continue to vaccinate people who are homebound and identifying strategies to reach more people with our community partners. Another comment on our breakthrough cases, they do tend to be older with the highest case rates in the age groups of people between 70 and 79, and over 80. And then, very few currently hospitalized with COVID-19 have been vaccinated, which does align with our data about vaccines effectiveness. And they still do remain the best way to protect ourselves and others from the virus. And if you haven't received your vaccine and you are ready to, please look on our website to find a vaccine clinic, call your doctor, or call 211. And just last night, there was a flurry of news, so I thought I'd bring it up around from the CDC and OHA recommending masking. The CDC recommends masks in areas with substantial community spread, which is 50 to 99.9 cases per 100,000 in the previous seven days. And then, OHA released a recommendation for universal mask use for all public indoor settings for people who are vaccinated or unvaccinated. So, still digesting all the news that came out late last night and figuring out what that means for us here locally. So, thank you.
Questions for Katrina?
No. Thank you for staying on, as Katrina.
I do. Katrina, you just mentioned the CDC, 50 to what, how many, per 100,000?
50 to 99 per 100,000 is the substantial risk. And then, there was...
In the last seven days?
In the previous seven days.
Where are we in that scale?
We would be considered substantial risk. In the previous seven-day, the period that I have available right now is July 18 through July 24, there were 238 cases. 50 to 99 per 100,000 is 174 to 348 cases. So, we do fall right in the middle of that category.
We're in the middle today, or for the last seven days?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Hey, thank you very much. I saw a couple nurses last night, I ran into them, that were in their scrubs, and they work at Salem Health, and they were echoing what you said. They are tired, and gave them my thanks. It was good to be out at the Fairgrounds on Friday, where we turned down, or shut off the vaccine clinic, basically. But I know that the strategy now is to try to get a lot of mobile clinics and get people vaccinated where it's hard to reach. So, want to encourage people to get vaccinated. And I went to the dentist this week, and I still have my, you know, mask. You have to go in medical facilities, and so I thought I'm gonna start carrying a mask again, based on what I heard last night. And let's hope we don't have to go back to some of that stuff that we were facing before. So, get vaccinated, and wash your hands, and do all the things that we know helps. Thanks, Katrina.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, it must be his turn.
Oh, for sure.
Is it my turn?
Consent calendar, yeah. You missed a couple of terms.
Well, then, in that case, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda. In it, under Board of Commissioners, approve an order reappointing Robert Carney, Don Fredrickson, Ed McKenney, Mike Runyon, and Carrie Sessoms to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, with terms ending July 31, 2024. Under Community Services, approve an order abolishing the Marion County Children and Families Commission. Under Human Resources, approve the recommendation to adjust pay grades upward and update the classifications for class codes number 620 Victim Assistance Manager, 621 Victim Assistance Program Coordinator, and 624 Victim Assistance Advocate. Under Public Works, approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the exchange of federal surface transportation block grant funds to state funds through September 31, 2024. Approve Amendment 1 to the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add $58,162.50 in federal funds for a new contract total of $2,884,657.50 to increase the bike lane width for the Hollywood Drive Bike and Pedestrian Improvement Project through August 6, 2029. Receive notice of the Marion County Planning Commission's decision granting conceptual and detailed approval of subdivision case number 21-001 Stywer Coalition LLC. Under Treasurer's Office, approve an order authorizing the Marion County Treasurer to invest surplus county funds in a manner that provides the best rate of return while protecting the funds and meeting cash flow needs during fiscal year 2021 and 2022.
I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a comment I want to make. We're sunsetting the Marion County Children and Families Commission, and this has been an important thing historically for Marion County. And our work for children and families will continue, but I think, based on our conversations with folks, this is an opportunity to rest and then reset. So, I just wanted to make that comment on the record.
Yeah. It started in 1993, with some legislation, and then the legislature about 10 years ago sunsetted, actually moved everything. In fact, I think I was there nine years ago, they moved everything into the education, et cetera, and stopped funding that. But for the last nine years, we've continued it on, and I think this is a chance to look at all the other places people are serving and how we're dealing with those, the sin missions that are there. So, yeah, good. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Our first action item, under Business and Service, consider approval of a contract for services with Train U.S. Inc. in the amount of $178,267 for information technology server room replacement project through June 30, 2022. Is anybody here from IT? Terry? Oh, yeah. Business Services. Let's see, you're not the IT guy.
Good morning. For Record Terry Stoner, Facilities Manager, I'm here with our new Project Coordinator, Project Coordinator Wesley Miller. And we're looking for approval to go with U.S. West Communities and the Train Company of Train to replace the cooling systems for the server room in this building, Quodale By using this, we can continue to use the same controls that we have now to monitor and to adjust temperatures, just to keep an eye on the system. So, with your approval, we can move quickly to get it done. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Wes, you ready? Anything you want to say? It should be...
It's an on?
There you go.
Yeah. So, the server room equipment is significantly old, and the access to it for repairs and stuff has gotten worse with, as equipment from IT with chariots and Marion County in there, and it's just dilapidating down. And one of the big things we struggle with is humidity control. That's one of the 911 calls we typically get. And so, those systems within that equipment is failing. Right now, one out of three has failed and decommissioned. So, it's a pretty important deal with this new system. It'll be redundant, so if one does go down, the other one will be fully capable of taking care of capacity, humidity, things like that. And, yeah, you have any questions?
Yep. So, I just noticed in this contract that this is going to add remote automated controls. You don't have that today? You have to physically go into the server room to adjust things?
Correct. I think IT may monitor through some of their systems for temperature, maybe humidity, I'm not completely sure. But, yeah, that'll give us remote, that'll give us trending, so that we can trend it, we can see when and what, and alarms that will, as we trend into a failure or an alarm state. So then, we can be proactive, come in before it ends up being an issue, so.
Great. Any questions?
Yes, Sheriff, if I may.
Yeah.
This looks like this was one of these contracts where a different governmental entity somewhere else did the bid and the solicitation and everything. So, we didn't actually do a competitive process, but someone else did. Is that right? So, you're convinced that this is the best deal we could get for this sort of work?
Yes, we did look around, looked at ourselves, but this came up as the best option for us and the quickest.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the contract for services with Train U.S. Inc. in the amount of $178,267 for the information technology server room replacement project through June 30, 2022.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Wes. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
I need some humidity control. I've been overheating lately, too.
Yeah.
Been one of those summers.
Wait till the next few days, is it?
I see it.
It's over 100 degrees.
I know, I saw it coming. All right. Our next item is Community Services, consider resolution approving a rural industrial improvement property tax exemption for Saab Buster Farms, Inc. And I see a few people here. Tamara's gonna kick us off, Nick Harville, and we have a guest, too. Great. Go ahead.
My name is Doug Weathers. I'm president of Saab Buster Farms.
So, good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services and Economic Development, is within our department. So, we have an application before you today for consideration, a resolution for you to consider, for industrial rural improvements to properties that are owned and operated by Saab Buster's Farms Incorporated. So, the rural industrial property tax exemption program is part of Marion County's code 3.35.020. This was an opportunity that Marion County began looking at in 2015. We sat around the table with others that looked into opportunities for businesses who've made large investments into our Marion County area, as well as their business, and finding ways to find some tax exemptions until they can get their properties and businesses up and operational, so that when an imposed tax is set on that business, that they're able to fully take advantage of the operations to pay those taxes. So, this is a three-year, basically, exemption for up to three consecutive years. The application has been submitted to the Assessor's Office, has been reviewed, and it meets all of the requirements of this particular exemption. The Board could put additional exemptions or conditions on this application, but is not necessary. That's up to you. If granted, Saab Buster's would be responsible for following up with all of the tax entities within the district, which is the entire boundary of Marion County, to notify them that there is this exemption, and basically, all the tax entities would forego these dollars proportionately. Saab Buster's anticipate more than $6.8 million of assessed value would be taxable property values added to its properties out on Wheatland Road. And you just met Mr. Weathers, and he'll be able to talk more about the project. Overall, for this project, you'd have more than $76,000 that would be exempt from taxation for each year for the three consecutive years. So, with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Nick and Doug to talk a little bit more about the process. I do want to just give kudos to Sedcor for their help in working on the ground with our businesses who are eligible to take advantage of this opportunity. Gentlemen?
Who would I want to go first, Sarah? Mr. Harville? Just pull that up close. Good to see you, Nick.
Good to see you, Commissioners. Nick Harville, Silverton. I worked for Sedcor on the Marion County Business Retention and Expansion Manager. Mr. Weathers and I have worked together for the last several years. The very first exemption that was approved by the Commissioners, Mr. Weathers was involved in with cold storage. And it's been a great help to a lot of businesses. So, when he decided to do this upgrade, we got together and did the exemption. So, he knows the need. He has 60 days to go to all the taxing districts and get letters of support, which he's done previously, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Mr. Weathers, welcome.
Well, thank you for hearing me out today. I really want to commend the Commission, especially for taking on this statute as the rural tap duty tax exemption, and as well as being, really, one of the leads in the state to do so. We're expanding with a new facility complete, and I know that Com has seen our facility, and it doesn't look the same since he's been there last. We're really improving the ability to harvest our hops safely with less noise. We have our safe review next week for measuring the level of noise and being more efficient with our labor costs as well.
Great.
Do you have any questions for me?
I will just say, thank you for the recognition that Marion County has taken the lead in this. And Tamara, and I know Nick, the history of this, Bill Cross, who represents Willamette Valley Vineyards, the reason this came about, and Tom was here, we, I think it took us two or three sessions to get this thing right. But Marion County is, I don't know if any other county has used this...
Not that I've heard.
Yet. And this is one of those things that it's an existing business, and I always have said this, it's a lot easier to help retain a customer than go out and get a new one. And I'm glad Sedcor understands that, too. And to have you be one of those businesses in our rich agricultural county that's taking advantage of it, it really makes me, I just, sometimes I get things right, very seldom. But this is one of those things where, when you sit here and, you know, there's $75,000 you're gonna save over the next three years, but you're gonna put in $7 million worth of new equipment.
It's probably about closer to eight and a half.
Okay. Whatever it is, but to have you make that investment in the future, and I think it's really, really a great thing. And I'm glad, Nick, that you really helped us get this along, so.
When I spoke with Salem Downtown Rotary a week ago at their Wednesday meeting, which happened to be their first in-person, I was their guest speaker, and we call it a generational investment, so it's not just for me, it's for my children and my grandchildren.
Yeah, and I was thinking, I almost wanted to say that, because I've been using the term with all this federal money that's floating out there, we're gonna, I'm gonna invest it for my grandsons, right? I mean, this one-time money that's out there. And I almost said that when I was saying this, because the $75,000 that we're gonna forego, wouldn't be there if you didn't make this investment. It wouldn't be there to begin with. But come four years from now, you'll be paying the property taxes on this. And it is for, when you think about that, it's for even the future generations to support the services that we need. We're only forego it for three years, but eventually, those taxes start to flow. So, it's a win-win for everybody, I think. Just want to thank our Community Services Department and Sedcor for making this thing. And Willamette Valley Vineyards, I mean, this was something that I remember sitting there with Jim Bruno, and he goes, "Look, I just did this $10 million investment, and now my property tax bill went, boom, and we don't have the sales to pay it, et cetera." So, this really gives people time to work into it, so. Good, I'm glad you're taking advantage of it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Weathers. So, as I was reading through this, I noticed that there's an agreement with WorkSource Oregon for, I assume, just for hiring. What kind of efforts do you have in place to work to hire local employees?
All of our employees are local. We have a larger force of more full-time employees now, and the ones that we try to hire are local. I understand the document from WorkSource through our very first application, and we have to notify them of our needs and the timeframe that we need to work in.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to share about your program that we just started? The youth program?
Yeah. So, actually, this might benefit you in the, now, or in the future. Thanks to Tamara and her team, and actually Roger Nyquist from Lynn County. Lynn County Commissioners have been doing this for many years. We, Marion County, just implemented a youth wage grant program, and for youth ages 14 to 17 that are first-time employees, 14 to 17, they can come work for you, and then you can apply back to the county for a $4 per hour grant for the months of May to September as a reimbursement for employing those youth and giving them job skills and experience so they can be loyal, committed individuals into our workforce. Tamara and her team did an excellent job of moving it forward, kind of overnight, and we're partnering with Willamette Workforce Partnership to execute that. So, it just went live about a week ago, and I literally talked about it every single day. We only have $40,000 in the pot right now, but it'll be an annual project, and I anticipate, folks, once it catches steam out there, it'll be utilized quickly, because people are pretty interested in it.
We will look into it, as long as we don't violate any...
Right.
...motion deals with being close to machinery and workforce.
Yes.
That's a challenge.
There's definitely some hurdles to overcome as far as industrial work, but there's no barriers to the type of employment, so I hope that it encourages business owners to hire youth, so that way, we can really get them committed to workforce.
We did start an intern program this year.
Oh, I'd love to learn about that, so, on another time.
We've been very successful.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just a comment. I'm really proud of your work on this and your work, Tamara, because I think this really is an important program. And for me, it's all about fairness. I don't know if people necessarily know, but there's a lot of programs to support businesses in cities. There's a lot of tax exemption programs and some of the urban renewal districts, and they kind of throw money at these businesses in cities, and there's not always the same incentives for businesses in the rural areas. And what you can have is if you don't have an even playing field, the capital can flee the rural areas for the urban areas, and you get these sort of burned-out rural areas. And we have such an important farming community here in Marion County, agricultural community, that something I'm really proud of this Commission is making that a focus, whether it's broadband or this rural industrial tax exemption, or really just focusing on making sure that there's an even playing field for our rural businesses and rural farmers, just like in the urban areas. So, I want to thank you, Commissioner, for that, and thank you for making this happen.
Yeah. Let's celebrate. Turn some of those hops into beer, huh? All right. We'll take a motion.
Look forward to September.
Okay.
Let's see.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a resolution approving a rural industrial improvement property tax exemption for Saab Buster Farms Incorporated.
I second the motion.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you for being here today.
Good to see you, Nick.
Good to see you.
All right. Next item is under Health and Human Services, consider approval of a purchase order with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc., in the amount of $477,860 to provide urinalysis testing services for individuals participating in Marion County Specialty Court Program, retroactive from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2023. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Jeremiah Elliott, I'm Senior Manager at Health and Human Services. Today, I'm presenting a $477,860 purchase order for Redwood Toxicology for urinalysis testing services. These services will be provided to the five specialty courts under the CJC grants, and the Health Department performs fiscal intermediary services for the courts. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Was this also, do we piggyback on somebody else's bid on this, or do we bid it out? How do we identify these folks from this contract?
This is a state pricing agreement.
State pricing agreement. Okay. Very good. And have we worked with them in the past?
We have.
We have. So, we feel pretty good about their work product?
Definitely. The courts have been working with them for years.
Fabulous. Okay. No further questions?
All right.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase order with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc. in the amount of $477,860 to provide urinalysis testing services for individuals participating in Marion County.
in Marion County Specialty Court Programs, retroactive from July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion and a second, any further discussion? All I'll just say is that these specialty courts are a really, really important part of our public safety judicial system, so it's good that our Health Department's not only involved with this portion, but in other things with mental health and other, other areas and administers those grants for the courts, so we thank you for doing that. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, thanks Jeremiah.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Information Technology, consider approval of amendment number one to the contract for services with Siemens Industry Inc. in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for a new contract total of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three for the installation of video surveillance systems in the Marion County Jail through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. I got Commander and Gary. Who's gonna go first?
I will go first, Gary Christopson, Marion County IT. This, this project is a jail video system replacement project. There's already a jail video system fully in place out there. This goes through and basically wipes out old technology and brings in new technology. IT and the Sheriff's Office have partnered together to develop this plan. We've selected a vendor. We entered into a contract with Siemens quite some time ago to do a design build, so it was a two-phase project. Phase one is complete, we got a design from the vendor, the Sheriff's Office has reviewed it, approved it, IT's reviewed it, approved it, Siemens is on board. What we're asking for today is amendment of four hundred and nine thousand dollars to execute phase two, which is to hire that vendor to come in and actually implement this system that we have already got the design for. This project again is replacing outdated technology with very current technology. The bulk of the work is replacing the very old analog cameras with digital cameras and replacing the video storage system with updated technology. And Tad's here today to help talk about the business requirements that we're trying to meet.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Tad Larson, I'm the Jail Commander for the Marion County Sheriff's Office. As Gary stated, this is a replacement project. What we've learned is that the fixing old technology and moving everything into a digital platform, there's going to be a lot of benefits from that, but it's been a very complicated project, both internally and externally. So, we're excited to finally see this project go from design into the build phase or the implementation phase, so we're, we are prepared to do business with Siemens. The wiring project that IT worked on starting last year is completed and ready for the cameras and it'll be nice to get rid of old technology, but the, the retrieval of the digital platform's going to be much, much easier. I think Jane's folks in legal will appreciate that. Sometimes it takes a little bit of coordinated effort between Sheriff's Office and an IT specialist to come out and retrieve video, so this will enhance that process, make it a little bit faster, a little bit smoother transition when we need to deliver video recordings. And I'm available for questions about the operation. It's roughly a five-month project since the wiring is already done.
All right.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
No, I feel like this has been in the works for a bit. Yay that we're here.
Yes, yay, officially yay.
Okay, all right, yeah.
One of many projects that IT has been working really hard on, Gary, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're getting very close to completing the rewire project of the jail, which is critical to this project kicking off, so that should be done in the next couple of weeks, so as soon as that's done, we're gonna get in touch with Siemens and get rolling and get this finished.
Great.
Fantastic.
But one more thing, just Gary has assigned a newer supervisor to this project that we're used to working with on jail projects, so that's gonna help things, speed things along, so thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. What about the RMS JMS, how's that implementation going?
We went live on June thirteenth, sir.
All right, okay.
With JMS, just to be clear.
With JMS, yeah.
The RMS project is still rolling. I think we're scheduled to go live.
October.
Late October.
Oh, okay.
And that'll complete the project.
Okay.
Are these just fun acronyms or are they actually like just letters that we throw around?
Records Management.
Sorry, Records Management System.
Jail Management System and Records Management System.
Thank you.
These are, these are years of work to get to this point.
I remember the first time I visited the jail and I went up there above, you know, where they book people and I was watching people input stuff and it just, it reminded me of like the first Apple computer or something that I ever saw, you know.
The screens may have been green back then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, green screens, yeah. Okay, we'll take a motion.
Is it me?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve amendment number one to the contract for services with Siemens Industry Incorporated to add four hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars for new contract total of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for the installation of the video surveillance system at the Marion County Jail through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
My seconded motion.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under Public Works, consider approval of public improvement agreement with Baker Rock Crushing Inc., DBA Baker Rock Resources in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars for Beechey Creek Fire North Fork Road signs project for the installation of traffic and other informal signs through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Oh my gosh! Do I get to watch a movie?
I just doubt that it's not two of them, Lonnie didn't even come all the way to the table. Okay. Careful pressure.
Ryan was, his, his videos, those presentations, right?
Presentations, yes. For the record, Ryan Crowther, Marion County Capital Projects Manager, here with Lonnie Radke, county engineer, and we're talking about first, our science contract on North Fork Road. So, just for people who aren't aware, North Fork Road runs from Highway twenty-two to the end of pavement, so that's where this project's occurring. You can see here, there's a map and each of those triangles is a sign location. So our construction plan is to replace and construct new signs related to the closure of North Fork Road, so you can see, we lost a lot of no parking and no river access signs, we're putting those back. Our low bid came from Baker Rock Resources, it was a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. We're working with FEMA to determine whether it's eligible for reimbursement, but we're still continuing to work with them on, on that piece. And our schedule, assuming you approve the contract, would be to start construction, we'd say July, but as soon as, as we give them notice to proceed and construct this by August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one.
That's quick.
Why wouldn't it be FEMA eligible for reimbursement?
Because it's awfully hard to get them to pay for anything.
We're still working through the process, any of the replacement signs should be. If they're within the FEMA section, there's also a section of North Fork Road that is, is not eligible for FEMA reimbursement because it's an FHWA ER-eligible roadway, and so we're...
Which means what?
I have no idea.
So, federal highways, if...
And I'm gonna, gonna look to you and make sure everything.
If a roadway is what's considered a major collector or above, it is eligible for federal highways emergency response, or emergency funding, and so that excludes it from being eligible for FEMA funding. And so with FHWA, we've worked with them to do a number of projects on that section of North Fork Road and that section is from Highway twenty-two to Gates Hill Road. And so, these were the only thing that, that didn't fall into their emergency repair category, this would have had to be a permanent repair project worked through them.
But that section of the road was impacted by the fire?
It, it was, yes.
I mean, I, I mean, I know the answer is yes, but I just am confused as to why it wouldn't be included in the disaster funds regardless of these other...
So, as Ryan has, has talked about, this is a combination of signs that would be replacing what has been damaged in the fire, but then also some temporary signage with the restrictions. And so FHWA, the, the rules with FHWA, we wouldn't be able to get reimbursed for any of the temporary signs affiliated with the restriction. But if we're talking about regulatory or safety signs that are being replaced, permanent signs that are being replaced due to fire damage, then we can apply for FHWA, but there's just, there's different rules for, for the two different sections.
Interesting, okay.
Remember when we had a radio tower burn and FEMA didn't pay for that?
Oh my God.
I remember that.
I do, actually, I just talked about this yesterday.
Anyway, we're getting it done.
All right.
And this is really to help, you know, we've got the signs already in place at the entry, the gates are coming, this is really to help the Sheriff's Office. We've been working with the Sheriff's Office to determine how many signs and, and where the signs are really necessary, but it's, it's to help them in, in their enforcement efforts.
Great. Excited.
Okay.
It's one more step forward in the recovery, good job. We're getting there.
Ready for a motion?
Oh, is it mine? Okay, consider approval of the public improvement agreement with Baker Rock Crushing Inc., DBA Baker Rock Resources in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars for the Beechey Creek Fire North Fork Road signs project for the installation of traffic and other informational signs through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right, thank you, and we got one more. Consider approval of public improvement agreement with Riverbend Construction Inc. in the amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents to provide asphalt, concrete repairs and paving for Beechey Creek, North Fork Road and Gates Hill Road repairs project through September thirtieth. Ryan, still up.
All right, thanks for having me again, I'll be up here for a little while this morning. So, again, this project's up in the canyon, it's on a portion of Gates Hill Road and North Fork Road, and this time it's only on the portion of North Fork Road eligible for FEMA funding. So you can see during the fires, we had pavement damage, spot damage caused by trees that fell on the roadway while they were burning, so it burned the, the asphalt, and then you can see here, there's a root wob that had damaged a significant portion of the asphalt up near the end of North Fork Road. So really, we're looking at that spot damage that was caused during the fire with this project and then getting those repairs done so that that damage doesn't get worse as we go through this next winter. So our construction plan is really to repair spot damage, this doesn't include doing a full overlay of the road, it just includes addressing those localized points of damage, so where you see it's burned through a layer of asphalt or, or something that's really needs to be addressed now. Our low bid came from Riverbend Construction at a hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven point seven, or, and seventy cents. And again, I put that this project is potentially FEMA eligible, but that's because we're working just through the final, we're working through the paperwork with FEMA, so I couldn't put that FEMA's going to reimburse us at this point, but I, I don't see a reason why we won't get to the end of that, but we are still working with them to make sure that that paperwork's all in order. Our construction schedule would be August of twenty twenty-one through the end of paving season, which is September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, assuming you approve the contract. With that, do you have any questions?
Jane was in a tour with me last week, we went up there and amazing, I didn't realize, you know, I heard that, you know, this fire went five hundred feet per second, right, in some places, and thinking of football fields, three hundred feet. And I saw these trees that literally were blown over. I mean, it wasn't like the ground was wet, right? It was, it was in September, it was dry, and these trees just got just ripped out like toothpicks and, and I noticed the same project has been done on Highway twenty-two, when you, right, Highway twenty-two, there was places that were burnt and ODOT's already gotten up there. I mean, I got delayed a couple times in the middle of the night while they were doing the paving, so this is the same type of thing that they're, they've been doing on Highway twenty-two, so. Really appreciate the work, again, that's a, that's a quick timeframe, getting it done between now and, and September, so appreciate we've got vendors that are contractors that can do that work right now. All right, any other questions?
Pro motion?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the public improvement agreement with Riverbend Construction Incorporated, the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents to provide asphalt, concrete repairs and paving for the Beechey Creek, North Fork Road and Gates Hill Road repairs project through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
My seconded motion.
In a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. And the last one, you don't get to stay here all day. Consider approval of public improvement agreement with Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents for the twenty twenty-one American with Disabilities Improvement Project through February twenty, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Or at least spreading it around with some different contractors, good.
Yeah, so, thanks again for having me, and so this time I'll be talking about our ADA project for the year. This project is in the East Salem area, we have two general locations, one on Lancaster Drive and one just off of Pennsylvania on Shenandoah and Shawnee. So you can see the existing conditions, these are some photos out there, we have asphalt walk, we have curves or, you know, radiuses that have no curb ramps and, or inadequate curb ramps, potential drainage issues that can cause issues for people walking in the area. What we plan to do with this project is to reconstruct these substandard asphalt sidewalk sections and then build compliant ADA ramps at a, a number of intersections. And then also, and this is tied to a grant we were successful on, we're going to install two new school crossings on Pennsylvania at Forty-Sixth Avenue and Shenandoah Drive, and I'll talk a little bit more about that grant on the next slide. So, the low bid came from Emery &amp; Sons Construction at four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Partially funding this project is our Safe Rets to School Grant that we were successful on, it will fund up to three hundred thousand dollars on the portion of the project off of Pennsylvania, it doesn't apply to this Lancaster section of the project. And then for this one, the schedule would be, we'd give them notice to proceed on construction as soon as we, we authorize the contract, but they have until February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two to complete construction. We don't expect them to use that entire time to do it, but we know that our, our concrete contractors are busy, so we wanted to give them a little bit bigger window to fit it in around weather and, and other constraints.
Will you go back to the slide with the current corners, sidewalk corners? So, are these the actual corners that are going to be replaced?
Yes, these are, are some of them.
So the one on the bottom right, is there, looks like their yard is encroaching on the sidewalk, does that get disturbed in order to make the ADA ramp?
Do you know specifically at this location? It, it could be too, what you're looking at is, so there's, there's the part of the sidewalk that has the manhole and then there's the, the other part of the photo that has a very narrow, I wouldn't even call it a sidewalk, it's, it's about two feet wide. In this area, this has happened, this, years ago, this, this was how this was built on a number of the, the roads, and so it looks like their yards are encroaching on it, but it is just a kind of a strange, again, I wouldn't call it a sidewalk, it's two feet wide. I don't know specifically at this location if we're doing any right-of-way acquisition.
We, we aren't doing any right-of-way acquisition with this project.
I think the whole project won't be taking any, so, okay, so, so, but there could be, yeah, it, it's gonna be a little bit funny with that two-foot, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
It's one of the characteristics of this neighborhood, not sure why, but it's, it's another challenge for us and, and the designs with the ramps and, and, and quite honestly, providing the ADA facilities that we're trying to provide countywide.
Because really, they're only gonna come down this way and, and exit, they're not really gonna even take that corner and continue on because it basically becomes a yard.
And I don't know exactly what, I, I don't know which road that, that is to, to know how many homes are down that road, but yeah, it's, it's, there's not a lot of people that would be accessing it, no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the public improvement agreement with Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents for the twenty twenty-one Americans with Disabilities Act Improvement Project through February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. Thank you both for being here today.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Always good to see your slideshows.
Thanks for your help, Ryan, on the housing stuff.
Under the Sheriff's Office, consider approval of memorandum of understanding with Marion County District Attorney's Office in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars to collaborate and provide risk assessment and case management for specific, specified nonviolent property drug offenders with medium to high-risk criminogenic risk factors, retroactive to July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Commander, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Seeing you a lot lately.
Yeah, just a little bit, yeah. It's good to see everybody. Today, for the record, Commander Kevin Carvanti, Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections Division, and today we're requesting board approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Marion County Sheriff's Office and the Marion County District Attorney's Office to provide coordinated service delivery as part of our Senate Bill four sixteen prison diversion program. As you're aware, this is our flagship prison diversion program originally implemented As you're aware, this is our flagship prison diversion program originally implemented in 2012. The 416 program is an evidence-based sentencing program employing risk needs assessments to identify appropriate candidates to divert from prison to community supervision. This program works in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, the DA's office, the courts, and Bridgeway Recovery Services. And funding for this is through the Criminal Justice Commission's Justice Reinvestment Initiative that currently funds one deputy district attorney. So within the program, the district attorney's office plays the key role as the gatekeeper by identifying potential candidates who meet the qualifying criteria. The target population, nonviolent property drug offenders with an identifiable substance abuse issue that also have motivation to change their behavior and address their addiction. If the client is deemed appropriate, the DA's office utilizes the public safety checklist to confirm the individuals, if they're medium or high risk, and then they're referred to our office for further evaluations. The program as a whole is a, provides evidence-based cognitive motivation, substance abuse treatment, and professional mentoring services, ensures the coordinated delivery of client services through enhanced supervision, and client services through, I'm sorry, appropriate level of case management as well. Program allows for up to 100 participants per year, and this MOU runs from July 1, 2021 through June 30th of 2023. Available for any questions?
Questions?
I don't have any questions. I just think that it's really great that we offer this program, you know, to keep folks out of jail.
I guess I do have a question. So for folks, for the offenders, for the lack of probably more appropriate words, is there, does the district attorney's office or the MCSO that participates in this talk to the victims about their feelings and support or lack thereof, if that's the case?
Yeah, if Paige, the DA, was here, Paige, she could probably give you a rundown of what that looks like, but that is definitely part of the process. And I'm not sure if it's seeking approval, but I know there's education, and I know there's reach out to the victims, because that is, it's a touchy situation when crimes occur as a victim. They want folks being held accountable, and so that's part of the education component. And we all know there's a handful of individuals that don't need to go to prison, that can be safely managed in the community under our supervision, hence the enhanced supervision and the wraparound treatment services. So that's the education component that she shares with, or her deputy DA's when they reach out, shares with them that there are, there are a lot of benefits associated with this, and the whole key is to get these folks on the right track, restore the victim, but at the same time, get off paper and out of the criminal justice system. Yeah, very good question.
Thank you.
And these are property crime offenders who are eligible for this, so these aren't folks that are committing murder?
No, no person-to-person, domestic violence, no sex offense, just the typical nonviolent property drug offender.
So this would be like stealing cars?
Sure, UMB.
Or the guy that robbed Rudy's recently?
What's that?
The guy that broke into the Rudy's fridge, stole a bunch of things out of it?
Potentially, you know, those that don't necessarily, I mean, the ones that we're trying to, I guess, the ones that do go to prison, the ones that scare us, you know, and then are those person-to-person folks that need that component as part of the process. But these are, initially, when we piloted this, if you were taking note on the implementation date, it was 2012. And this is when we were approached by the Criminal Justice Commission to pilot this. And this was actually Senate Bill 416 was actually a failed.
Never, never passed.
Right, Senate Bill. But it had legs, and it made sense, because we all knew there was.
Budget note to get the money over here, because the bill didn't pass.
So then, then JRI took place, House Bill 3194 in 2013, which helped us continue that funding, which continued, really, this was our first prison diversion program. And so this is still alive with CJC funds and JRI funds.
So this is really folks who are driven by their addiction to steal or to commit property crimes? And it's an attempt, rather than send them to prison and see them get further into criminal behavior, to try to interrupt that and help them address their addiction and move away from criminal activity?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that right?
Yeah, we've had a great relationship, this, the partnership with DA's office, Bridgeway, the courts. And we're going on, it was eight, nine years. We all recognize the addiction piece is huge. And it does, it's that, well, it's also, it's the addiction plus the antisocial thoughts that go along with that. And so it's a very collaborative project, and it's been successful for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember when you first started this program, I was still in the legislature, and I'll never forget, Steve, I call him the janitor.
Matt McNeil.
McNeil. I was down on the House floor, and he brought in his cohorts that were supervising under 416, and they actually sat up in the gallery, and I went up and talked to them all and what they were doing. And the special things that he was doing with these people to help them, you know, get back on their feet and stuff, is a really good program. And I'll never forget that that was a good example to be able to point out to the legislature. Here, they're here today to visit us and see, see how the program that they were participating in, how it actually is made, you know, in legislature. It was interesting. So I don't know if that makes sense, but I had people that were in 416 sitting up in the gallery in the Capitol. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. Is Steve still with us?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I talked to Steve about, a couple weeks ago, and I go, you know, Commissioner Cameron still talks about you at boards.
Oh, yeah, I could. But, you know, I call him the janitor. You know, I don't know if you know the story behind that, but I was over visiting with our parole and probation when I was a representative to see what they did, and they were starting to do the reach-ins and stuff. And I was with, oh, what's her name?
Anna.
Anna, I was with Anna, and she was showing me how they do reach-ins. And this guy came around the corner with a broom in his hand, or a mop, I can't remember. And he introduced himself as the janitor to me, Steve did, so.
Yeah, I'm well aware of it, and I've talked to him about it.
Yeah, yeah. So I still call Steve the janitor. All right, enough.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a memorandum of understanding with the Marion County District Attorney's Office in the amount of $236,741 to collaborate and provide risk assessment and case management for specified nonviolent property and drug offenders with medium to high-risk criminogenic risk factors retroactive from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that passes.
Thanks.
Now, I'm going to do really quick. I'm going to just recess for just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Just recess, and then we'll come back and open a public hearing. Let me just take five minutes. Okay, we'll come back from our recess. I will open a public hearing. A public hearing to consider a conditional use case number 20-44 Seasons at Red Oak Farm, LLC. And want to make sure that everybody is here that wanted to testify. I have a sheet that we still need to sign up. But we will open up with Lindsay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Lindsay King, Marion County Planning. I did, before I start into my speech, I wanted to let everybody know that we did receive some last-minute comment before the 5 o'clock cutoff last night. And I do have copies for everybody if you'd like to take those.
Sure, I have a file here that.
They wouldn't, they won't be included in, they wouldn't be in that. I received them after I dropped or had sent those over.
Okay.
So I have copies for everybody. I'll just.
Yeah, would you please?
There's no chance that publicists will receive additional comments.
I think that that wasn't fair. I think, I can ask Lindsay.
All right.
That'd be great. Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Jane has a question for Lindsay when she gets back her microphone.
We'll get Lindsay back on the microphone.
No, you're fine.
Wow, DLCD's giving us comments on.
So Lindsay, it looks like the board received an email last night saying that the cutoff for public comment was 4 o'clock.
That was a miscommunication with, we were still under the COVID restrictions, and that was for the sign-up to speak on the phone.
Okay.
So there was a little bit of a miscommunication there, and I do apologize about that. But it is 5 o'clock for written testimony.
Thank you.
Lindsay, we're just reading this.
Yep, of course.
You just handed to us, okay?
Of course.
Jane, you got a copy of this?
I did, thank you.
Okay. All right. Ready?
Yep.
Want to let Lindsay go?
Sure.
Just wait just a second.
No, it's fine. I can, she can go.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Open this up.
Thank you so much. Again, Lindsay King, Marion County Planning. The item before you today is an application for conditional use to operate a commercial use in conjunction with farm use on a 74.5 acre parcel in an exclusive farm use zone located at 21465 Arbor Grove Road. The commercial business the applicants are proposing is a farm experience program, and the proposed experience would be directed towards families and youths. Additionally, the applicant proposes other activities related to the farm experience, such as U-Pick, harvest and holiday-themed activities, retail sales of local products, wildlife viewing, and plant education. The subject property is located approximately three miles from the city of Donald and is not located within an urban growth boundary. The property is located on the west side of Arbor Grove Road at the intersection of Yergin Drive and Arbor Grove. The property currently contains an existing home, accessory buildings, and has a larger area that's being developed based on permits for the program. Properties surrounding the parcels are all zoned exclusive farm use and in farm use. Staff gave decision of denial on February 1 of 2021 and a decision of denial for reconsideration on March 16th, 21. Staff faced these decisions that not all of the conditional use criteria were met. In order for a land use permit to be approved, the applicant must meet all applicable criteria. That decision was appealed to the hearings officer, and on April 29 of 2021, the hearings officer conducted a public hearing, and on June 10 of 2021, the hearings officer issued a decision denying that request. The decision was appealed to the Board of Commissioners on June 25th of 21, and the board accepted the appeal and scheduled this public hearing on July 14th. The application was denied due to criteria D not being met. Criteria D under the. Criteria D under the conditional use criteria for conditional use in conjunction with farm use is the commercial activity must be primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses. Since the appeal was submitted, additional testimony has been submitted both for and against the proposal. I have included that testimony in the file as well as sent them electronically to the board's office. And you should have those in your files. And I will stand for any questions you might have.
Wait, questions for Lindsay at this point?
I have none for Lindsay.
Okay. Okay, well, let's, we'll hear from proponents.
Yeah, Marty?
Yeah, go right ahead and you can just come right there.
All set?
You bet. Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Jeff Jones. My wife Heidi and I own Seasons at Red Oak Farms. So thank you for letting me speak today. I really appreciate it. So we bought the farm back in May of two thousand and nineteen. We've been looking for a long time. It's hard to find property in that area between, say, two-nineteen and River Road and I-5. And this one was in bankruptcy. So it took us a while to buy it. And when the purchase was done, we found just, it's been three years of neglect. Bill was a great guy, but he just didn't have any money to keep up the farm. So while there were seventeen acres of blueberries, they weren't cared for, they weren't pruned, they weren't fertilized, produced very little in the crops. After we bought the farm, the person that was farming those no longer irrigated them. So those seventeen acres went away and the other eighteen acres of tillable land was not in production.
I'm sorry, it was what?
Not in production. It was a non-working farm. So we bought a farm that was three years fallow, if you will. So it took some time. It took about a year and a half to get the farm cleaned up. There were chemicals all throughout the property. So when we were spraying and mowing, we had to be careful where we went because there were what ended up being five pickup loads of chemicals that laid around. The driveways were a foot tall in weeds. The fields that were farmed were blackberries and thistle, very difficult to get rid of. So we took basically what we consider a kind of a non-working neglected farm. And today, if you had a chance to tour it, I know you can't, but it's really beautiful, right? We cleaned it up, it looks great. We took eleven forty yard dumpsters of garbage out of the property. And it is now a working farm. So it says seventy-four point five acres, but of that, only thirty-five acres are farmable. The rest of it is in trees down by the woodlands or it's very steep hills or it's in an area that was at one time gravel for hoop houses, for a nursery. Hoop houses are gone and now it's just bare gravel. So that's all clean up and looking great. It will be farmed. It is a farm. So those thirty-five acres will be farmed for as long as we own, own the property. No question about it. The area we're talking about is much, much less. So we've had a dream for a long time of kind of a farm experience, something to bring kids in. This goes back like twenty years. Bring kids in, let them see what a working farm is like. I've been in the nursery business for thirty-eight years. I own two businesses that are in the nursery business. My wife was an educator, I was on a school board for twenty years. So we have a real desire for education and a really love for agriculture. And a lot of friends and stuff in the nursery farming business who cannot find workers anymore, right? We're all looking all the time. A lot of the kids that grew up in the families are gone, going to college, heading out and out there. So as we talk more to them, we talk to the farm bureau, we talk to, you know, 4H and FFA and all these people that you would expect to kind of partner with if you're going to have a farm experience. And there's just a real need for something like this. I think the, the main thing for us would be to sort of clarify maybe what we're doing as opposed to what people may think that we're doing. And it's nobody's fault, I just think there's a bit of dichotomy between the two things. So we have between one and a half and two acres that is a gravel area and then a little bit of a yard. That's the extent of the program, right? So the gravel, we have a building that Lindsay talked about that had to permit. Now we're putting in a new road on Arbor Grove, not a road, but a new driveway that would be safer because the current driveway doesn't have great line of sight. And the idea is to be safe and obviously want people that can make the turn. So that's been permitted as well. And that project is starting in the next week or so. So it's quite long and expensive, but well worth it, right? It'll be all the codes for the fire department and all the things that we would need to do. The idea is for the kids to come in and have sort of this farm experience. What does it look like when you plow the land for crops, when you plant the crops, when you grow them, when you harvest it, right? What does that look like? I'm in the nursery business, so I've taught this for many years in schools, different types of plants, all that, and what they do. Things like the five senses garden with the edible garden, what are those good parts? What are the plans that they found when they came through? Also, just simple like that. And there's a big demand there, right? The, I would tell you that I know what a successful business plan looks like. I have companies that do well and I know that this is not a successful business model, right? There's no way we're going to bring enough money to pay for the investment that we have. For Heidi and I, that doesn't matter, right? So this is something we wanted to do for a long time. We have the resources to not make money on this. We have a nonprofit called Firmly Planted that will certainly handle a large part of the program. There'll be school kids who do pay to come, right? But there'll also be a lot of disadvantaged kids, kids with wheelchairs, kids that can't ordinarily come out to farm that will pay for it through the nonprofit, right? So the number of people that come through the property, we don't expect that to be very big. We're not in a, in a time of our lives when we can have people there every day, right? That doesn't appeal to us. It would be too much work, it wouldn't be fun. We don't have enough people to help us do that. So I can't tell you today exactly what that might look like. But our desire would be one or two groups a week when it makes sense, which would be in the fall or maybe late spring, right? We only have Harton currently for thirty-two cars. I don't expect that to grow, by the way, I think that'll be the same. I doubt that on most of these field trips you would have thirty-two cars. I think it would be less because you'll have a school bus and some parents or something. So we're not anticipating that that's going to be a major problem. We'll certainly communicate to all the people that are coming to the farm to go from the south, St. Paul Highway, not from Yergin Road. They can take Case Road, they can take French Prairie and come on the back way. I can't make them do that, as you know, but that would be what's on all of our paperwork. When we send them, that's what we would encourage them to do. Just to, just to sort of be planning a little bit ahead of time. So I think, I think for us, this has been kind of a, a different process than we thought it would be. We had some really good meetings. We had hired, we wanted to do this right. We hired an attorney, went to the planning commission and had really a great meeting, right? It was really, it was really nice. They had a lot of great questions for us and we left with a really positive sort of feeling toward the program. That's why we went ahead and got the building started, got the road going. And then it just, it just sort of got more difficult, right? Which is totally fine. It just got more difficult. And so now we're just trying to save the program, right? We're hoping we can find a way to do something that's not as big, I think, as people have in their minds, something that's much more contained, that doesn't actually, you know, bring along with it issues that they're concerned about. And that we really want to be great neighbors. We have, all the close neighbors around us have supported the program. Some of them have offered to actually participate in the program. We've had a lot of letters and things sent in from nurseries and farmers and things that you've probably read in the file that are very hopeful since their kids aren't following them in the farming or nursery business, that there may be people that we can raise up and get them interested in farming. And then, of course, we'd like to partner with FFA 4H, give them a place to meet and, and see if we can help their programs. So that's kind of what we're doing. It's what we're trying to do, right? If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Jones.
So many, I have so many questions. Thank you for coming today.
Pardon?
And I, I just want to say, I mean, I don't know where I'm going to go with this, but I appreciate your, your thought and creativity and interest in promoting agriculture, especially among the youth. So you've, you mentioned a lot in your presentation that I didn't really see throughout the numerous documents that we received for this. So my first question is, is what are you specifically going to be farming on the other seventy-three-ish acres?
Well, it's seventy-four point five, but only thirty-five is farmable. The rest is woods down by a creek. So that stays natural. That doesn't get touched. The thirty-five acres at this point would be clover.
Every year, like permanently?
Well, I don't know. Clover, you can't have anything forever because, but we did winter wheat the first year, clover the second year. What we're looking for are not necessarily crops that make a lot of money. We're looking for crops that would be interesting for the kids to see, easy to plant, easy to watch. And clover's great because it goes from, that's the beautiful red flower, then it gets picked for seeds, cut for seeds and then it actually gets kind of harvested down, right? So it has a, like a five cycles on it. But it does take nitrogen down, I mean, it's, it's not a crop you can do forever, probably. But it will be farmed, right?
So do you have any current relationships right now to be able to sell those materials, those products, once they're harvested?
Yeah, we have people that absolutely come in and take care of that. There's no, there's no shortage of people that want like clover seed and no, no issues at all. And I've been in the area for all my life. We know lots of people.
Do you have any current relationships with the youth programs that you listed? And can you give me an idea of what that would, what that really looks like? Because, well, can you tell me what that would look like?
When you say youth program, are you talking specifically?
Well, you've stated in your application and then throughout, schools, Future Farmers of America, 4H, et cetera.
Yes, so we have a lady named Lindsay and she's the one who's in contact, so she works with me, right? She's in contact with FFA and 4H, she's the one who talks to them and finds them. She also is the one who works with the schools, right? So she'll be sort of in charge of bringing them in. We have talked to them both. What they, what they really need is someone like us that has a place that they can meet. So the building we built has a cement floor and it has, you know, drains in it. So very easy for them on a wet day to bring kids in with chickens and it wouldn't matter, right? They can come in the building, we can bring plants in, it's not going to hurt anything. So, yeah, so they need a place sometimes to get together and meet. For us, we want to use them to help us teach as well, right? So we have teachers, not just 4H and FFA, but actually teachers who want to teach on birds as an example. So we'll put together a bird program. There are other, there are other farms who do something very similar, like down in Southern Oregon and all across the country. A huge one in Georgia, so we have some of their curriculum as an example. I've taught nursery, I've taught plants to kids, so I'll continue that process.
And so I don't understand the admission part. So what am I buying? If I was a parent that sent my kid on a field trip, what am I buying?
Yeah, so what they're going to get is about two hours of instruction and then they'll have a time to play as well, right? They'll probably bring their own lunch, I don't think we'll supply that. That's not something that I think they want us to do. So they're just paying for the teaching time. And really, all it does for us is offset some of the cost of the building, running the building, the heating, the cooling and those kinds of things. It's not going to make money. There's not a lot of chance in the world, right? You would have to bring in so many kids to try to make this work. It just can't be done.
And so the, and what is the teaching specific to?
Well, two things, farming for one, right? So anticipate when things have been planted, grown, harvested, fertilized, they get to see the process, right? We're going to have a greenhouse, there'll be plants that they've never seen before. You can ask an eight-year-old how peanuts are harvested, they wouldn't know it was a root crop. So there are things we're going to grow, make a pot and a cocoa plant, things they've never seen before, but they, they use all the time, right? And then farming practices, you might know of a company called Earth Irrigation. So they're in dire need of, of people that work on equipment. So when we bring, if we bring older kids, then they want to bring some tractors over. They want to get them on the tractor, show them that, get them excited. And see if they can't get some apprentices set up, right? So they have someone coming up by house. They're willing to train someone who knows nothing, just to get people in the door. So people like that are looking at us and they say, wow, if you're going to do this, we want to participate. We need help.
And then you mentioned that your, your wife is a teacher. And I'm sorry, where did you, you said that you moved, you're moving here from where?
No, no, we've lived here all our life. We've been.
You've lived in Marion County your whole life?
Started, re-retuned, went to Tyke, then we've been here for about twenty-two years.
In Marion County?
In, well, we're up between Newburgh and Sherwood. So it's a, we're in Yamhill County, right? But we have a Sherwood address.
Okay. What schools would you be recruiting to this?
I don't know. I think anyone that would be interested, right? So I think all the schools have, before COVID, I can't speak to after COVID, have money set aside for things like this, right? And so they oftentimes will go to Frenchberry Gardens or Aubamans or something, which they may still do. But those are primarily a little education and then a lot of, of fun. Aren't to be a little bit different. It'll be a little more geared toward education, right? And less on the fun side.
Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Commissioner?
So I think my question is about EFU land. So it seems like that's the issue here, right? And I assume you lived in the area for a while, so you sort of understand the history of EFU land and how a lot of the farmers in Marion County, creating exclusive farm use land was really important to them.
Yes.
And so I think what you're, what you're getting and some of the people we're getting from the community is concern about maybe eroding EFU land. They saw your application as like, is this trying to get around kind of the purpose of EFU and protecting farm ground? And, and when I was reading the statute of uses permitted in exclusive farm use zones, I think one of the things that I was confused by is there's a lot of things that potentially could work for you. So there's parks and playgrounds, community centers owned by a nonprofit community organization, operated by and for residents of rural communities, there's farm stands, there's all these things that, especially since you're not really interested in making money, could potentially fit and you could do some of the activities you want to do. And it doesn't have to be. So I think, so that's a question for me in my mind is why, why? Because I've worked with Joe for a while and Joe Fenimore in our office and I would say he's one of these guys that, Lindsay, I haven't worked with you as long, but he's one of these guys that like tries to help people work through the statute to do permitted uses, you know? Because we're in this world now where we don't, you know, we're sort of restricted, right? We have statewide land use planning and so the state basically tells us what land uses are going to be and what's going to be permitted by state statute, right? So we don't have the ability to change state statute. And so I would say my view of our planning department is they really go out of their way to help people achieve what, what they can accomplish under state law. And so I think the question I have is, is, it seems strange to me that this turned into a scenario where you weren't talking to them or they weren't talking to you and it kept being like a, it feels like you guys kept being confused and frustrated as to why this wasn't, you couldn't navigate this process. Because a lot of folks that, that we see are able to work with them and they get through the process pretty easily. So I think that's a question in my mind. And the second question is sort of, is related to this is, so there are certain things that farmers need, right? Or use, but wouldn't really make sense in a farm, in EFU zone, right? So somebody could say, well, all the farmers I know drive pickup trucks. And so I'm going to sell pickup trucks in EFU zone because that's a commercial activity that's in conjunction with farming, right? And I think most people would say, well, wait a second, that, that doesn't really comport with what EFU is meant to be and that, that doesn't really work. And I think somebody could look at what, what you're trying to accomplish and say, well, wait a second, is this really just like a children's museum or an amusement park that's farm themed, right? And in which case, while it may be important or it may be good, or is it a school, right? Is this a use that falls under the statute? So I think that's sort of some of the, some of the input we're getting is, and this is the question in my mind, is, is if you were to characterize, if you were in our shoes and say, okay, how, how do we fairly draw a line, right? And I noticed in some of the documents, you're sort of like, well, you know, this, this revenue question of seventy-five percent of your revenue has to come from the farm or surrounding farms, that's not a good standard. I guess the question I would have is like, what standard would you use, right? Because there is this sort of problem, which is I could make an argument that selling four trucks on my farm is something. problem, which is I could make an argument that selling four trucks on my farm is something that benefits farmers in the area, right? But I don't think that would be an appropriate to have a dealership on EFU land. So, so what, how would you, how would you do this? How would you make a rule that would allow what you're trying to do and also could be applied generally to everybody else?
Yeah, so I think in regards to the first question, you know, we met with the county and I think we came away with what we thought was the best plan, right? I mean, like I said, the meeting went really well. They were all great. It was a great meeting, right? We came away with a plan for the building, we came with a plan for the road. We kind of thought we had a plan for the property. And so we went forward. It took us a while to get everything together. And by then, like the people that were there had left, the people came in. I think probably you're right, one of the issues is we never got called in again, right? All this was happening independent of each other. And we got frustrated at times because we would think like we answered the question on farming and then, you know, we would hit this, they would say, well, we're not farming. We're farming, right? We're actually farmers. There was some frustration there and that's part of why this narrative is important today to try to say, we're, in it for me, EFU land needs to be farmed. And I need to not take anything out of farming. It needs to be farmed. So that's how I looked at it. We had this gravel area that was an acre and a half that wasn't being used for anything. It can never, it's not going to go back to farming, we can't haul the gravel away. And so it seemed like it fit really well, right? If we were taking land out of production, totally get it. If we had a thousand people, two thousand people on the weekend, and I, I get it, right? None of those are where we're headed. But I think that's the perception when you talk about a farm experience, that can very easily get in people's heads. So I was trying to come in today to say, I think this got out of hand, I think we thought we had a plan that the county liked and then it just kind of didn't work, right? Is, is it sad that we never got together around a table and talked about this? Absolutely. I don't know how to do that after, after the denial. I don't know how to do that after those things happen, right? We kept thinking there was a way to go to the next step and kind of explain it better and-
Would you be willing to work with our staff and kind of get this, accomplish some of what you want through existing rules? Because I think, when I look at this, I think, I just look at this as, I, I feel like I could, again, I'm not sure I could run a business, then, but when you said we're not trying to make money on this, I feel like I could structure some of the activities you want to do in a way that would fit within existing statute and you wouldn't have this, I mean, I think of like Baumans, I think of Easy Orchards Market, right? There are these places that, that are doing it within the rules and there's not this sort of conflict. So is that something you'd be open to, working with our staff and figuring out how to, how to make it work with the rules?
Yeah, you know, we, we have done this process because we wanted to do it right, right? There's a lot of people having school kids over that don't have permits, as you know. There's a lot of farmers bringing people in who didn't want to come and do this process, right? But we want to do this right. And if we could sit down and work this out, that's amazing, right? We just want to find a way to do this. And, and we don't want to inflict injury on our neighbors, right? That's why we talked to all of them before and we don't want to, you know, take production, land out of production. We don't want to do that. And we just happen to have this really nice farm that's kind of set up this way already. So if we can use the gravel to do something and teach kids and make it a good experience and maybe some of them will stay in the business and they'll work with some of the nurseries and people, that's awesome, right? That'd be great. I get your point on the code, right? I've seen that happen before, where people kind of push the rules and suddenly they're selling cars on their property. I get that. That's not anywhere we're working on.
Well, I'll tell you-
Commissioner, can I just ask really quick, I'm just on your, so I'm curious because I agree with everything Commissioner Willis said and our staff has always done a tremendous job. And they, they feel very engaged and invested to me, but I'm new. So maybe in this situation, there was something that hung, hung them up. But specifically to your suggestion of working with them, I feel like the only way to get to a space that works for the county rules in our staff is this farm stand concept. When you refer to Easy Orchards and Baumans, the very two specific things that those properties have are stores. Farm stand stores. And I feel like through all this documentation, you were pretty clear, you're not interested in having a store and you're not producing any materials on your land that could be sold in a store, right?
We have about an acre and a half or an acre of sunflowers that could be used for U-Pick or something.
Okay, so are you, are you saying that you're wanting, you're willing to put up a store, like a farm stand?
Some of this will probably have to go to Michael, my attorney, because he understands all this better than I do. So I don't want, I don't want to speak out of turn and be, give you bad information, right? But right now, we're not letting anyone on the property that doesn't have an appointment. In other words, we're not just open. And we don't want to be just open for anybody to come in for a lot of reasons. One, I just can't control, I can't control who's coming in that way, right? I can't control the number of cars, can't control the number of people. And we're not looking to be busy every day.
For the U-Pick portion of your property?
Yeah, or, or even-
Sure, well, I mean, Easy Orchards and Baumans don't have people randomly roaming their property either. They have hours.
But they don't have U-Pick, right? So a lot of U-Pick places, you just come in and you pick and write, and then you go. So we're trying, even with the U-Pick, we wouldn't have just an open door, right? People would have to be invited or sign up or-
But these are all details that can be worked out, right?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to get to, I, I feel like these are questions and conversations our staff would have had in order to try to be successful in getting to what would work. And I'm trying to understand why it doesn't. So, carry on.
I would, I'll be honest, what I was surprised with when I was reading some of your responses was sort of the adversarial tone. And again, this came from your attorney. But it felt very like litigation, right? And, and what I wanted to, to share with you is like, we just got a, a letter from LCDC, from the state, saying we don't support this, right? What that says to me is even if we were to say yes today, this thing will get appealed and the odds are Luba's going to say, uh-uh, right? And that's what I mean, we're like, we're not, we're not the end of the road here. We're not, because we have statewide land use planning, we're making decisions within a context, within a state statutory scheme. And so that's why, what I've seen where people are successful, it's like they go to the planning staff and instead of it being sort of a, this is where you're wrong, and this is where you're wrong, and this is where you're wrong. It's more of a, hey, we have this dream. We want to help educate kids in farming. What are the paths that we can take to be successful? Because you, you can kind of go down this path of like, well, the Marion County planning staff is wrong and, you know, the interpretation of the commercial activities rule is contrary to the text of the code and totally inconsistent. And, and you can do all that. And the commissioners can even say yes to you. But if it's not what the statute says and if it's not what Luba's going to agree to, then it's like, you're not actually going to get to achieve your dream. So I think the question for me, and maybe, you know, and I don't know, I haven't talked to your attorney, but I mean, it's possible that somebody looked at this and said, well, we want to make case law. Or this is a chance for us to move the law in some way. But it doesn't sound like that's really what you're trying to accomplish. And if that's what you're trying to accomplish, I won't, you know, stand in the way. But if what you're really trying to accomplish is we want to have this dream and we want to bring kids in, if that's really what you want to do, then I'm not sure sort of this adversarial litigious approach is actually going to get you there, I guess would be my, my perspective. And so I just sort of kind of give that to you as a thought. Because I, I don't, I can't speak to their commissioners, but I want kids to grow up loving agriculture. And a lot of people in our community really want that. I know our farmers really want that and our nursery guys and gals really want that. So I don't think in principle, anybody looks at this and says, wow, what a horrible thing to have kids come to a farm and do U-Pick and learn about farming. I think the question is just, what's the best way to accomplish that, right? And so it feels to me like there, there's a way that, that if, work with our staff should be able to get, get through that.
That'd be amazing, right?
Yeah.
Because it's, that stuff's just unpleasant.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm with you, right?
You have another question?
No. I, I mean, I, I just want to say that I'm pro-education of agriculture and farming, a hundred percent. There, I think it would be awesome. Schumacher Community College just opened a program that is phenomenal, but it's for older, it's, you know, for older youth and, and adults. I do think that this is an area of the market that doesn't exist and, and specifically for kids in the urban area. And we do have programs that I'll be working to enhance through, you know, Marion County 4H and so forth to really bring more kids into the opportunities, but I, I admire the, the interest in the concepts.
So, go ahead.
No, I'm-
So I, I want to come back to the, the main issue that's identified in both the hearings officer and planner and Lindsay brought it up. The, the issue of the criteria D, supplier of farm use. And, and maybe this is a question for staff when they come back. Is there ever been any other, because the, in your, one of your appeals or your attorney said basically, the issue of farm use is supplying future labor. Is, and I guess the question would be, has there ever been that challenge that that is a farm use? I'm just thinking of intern programs, et cetera. Has that ever been used anywhere else? And maybe, Lindsay, I'm, I'm not going to call on you right now when, when I ask you to come back. I'll ask that. But I think that's, I want to get back to the criteria, because what is the supply of farm use? And Mr. Jones, are, I've heard you are farming or you're not farming. You have thirty-five acres that you can farm. And you had seventeen acres of blueberries that went out and eighteen acres that weren't in production. So where is that thirty-five acres today? What's happened with it?
Two years ago, it was winter wheat, and this year it was clover.
Okay, what are you doing with that?
Oh, we still do, yeah.
So you have receipts that show the, the-
I have a farmer who helps. So he comes in, because I've not been farming before. So he's a local farmer. He and his, he's got two young sons, like fourteen and twelve.
But you, but you can prove that there is income off of those thirty-five acres to you? Okay, thank you. And then I had another question and this is probably, I'm, I'm good, I'm good with Mr. Jones at this point in time and I want to ask legal counsel a question. So in their, in, from the attorney on a, this must have been yesterday, the twenty-seventh, on issue number five, new issues raised by opponents. He's claiming that basically that the record was closed on April twenty-ninth and under state law, the reopening of land use record to address an appeal is limited to the issues raised in the appeal. Can you just address that, Jane, for us? Do you need this back?
No, I, I have a copy. Thank you. So I believe this goes to the testimony that I believe some people are waiting to give in oppositions in this application. And so I think applicant's position, based on this letter, is they shouldn't be able to testify. These hearings are de novo. The board can consider new evidence. Our code says that the hearing before you is limited to the issues that are raised. And as long as, as the testimony given is in response to the issue before this board, that is whether this is a permitted conditional use under our code, I think it can come in.
Yeah, so, okay, so, and that issue is D, the criteria D is what we're really, we're asking of-
The, the question is, yes, I mean, that, that's the issue that the planning director and the hearings officer, I think, denied this application on. But the larger question is, is this proposed activity, is it something that is within a conditional use, an allowable conditional use on EFU land? Would you agree?
Yeah, okay.
But I think, I think you're right, Commissioner. I mean, in my reading of it, the, the commercial activity must be primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses. That seems to be the whole ball.
That is, that is what everyone's been-
That's what it's being denied on, is that, that they haven't shown that. And in their, their attorney's letter yesterday, they basically are saying a future supply of labor is, and that, that, I'm wondering if that's been tested anywhere, a future supply of labor. Okay, Mr. Jones, I think we're good. We are going to, thank you very much and really appreciate you, and a couple of things before you leave and you're-
Yeah.
I really want to say thank you. It's good to hear that our staff is a very positive staff. Even when we say no, we want to be able to do it with a smile on our faces.
No, it's all good.
It's great to hear that about our staff from you. Thank you very much. And you're going to be here, so we're going to move on to testimony that we have signed up, right? Oh.
Hi, I'm the attorney. I'd like to speak to, I'm with the applicant.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Proceed.
Yeah, we can do that before we go into testimony.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mike Chilardi. I'm applicant's legal counsel. I'm an agricultural and land use lawyer. For the record, my address is P.O. Box eight-five-two-nine in Coburg, nine-seven-four-zero-eight. I want to thank you again for hearing this appeal and for your attention to this case and to land use issues in general. I think you've covered a lot of the ground that I wanted to, so I don't want to draw this out. But I want to speak to the history of the discussions that we had with the staff because I feel like that's unfortunately been mischaracterized. And I want to speak to what the EFU statutes allow, the different uses and why we chose, why we are pursuing this category instead of some other category. It looks like you've seen the letter that I sent you yesterday, which was an attempt to answer the questions that you were raising a couple of weeks ago. So what I'm going to say kind of follows that. You know, we, we've been working on this for two years. I mean, we proactively, I had informal discussions with the planning staff about what we were hoping to do. We decided to have a formal pre-application meeting with the staff. We talked about the various options to permit this. We proposed this commercial activity category because we thought it was the best fit under the statutes. And I'm happy to go into those details. Our understanding was that the staff agreed with us and that they supported this permit. So then we went forward with the application and also to proactively address other issues that we thought were going to come up in the land use process. So we got commercial building permits for this workshop. And this gets at the farm stand issue, which I'll come back to. But we wanted to make sure that the building was going to be safe for people to use because you can build an agricultural building and it's exempt from structural building codes, right? But once you start inviting the public into that building, it doesn't qualify as an ag building. And that can present a lot of difficult, you know, technical and costs for people to try to renovate that. So we wanted to make sure the building was safe. We invested the time and the money to do that. We also wanted to make sure that the access was safe. And so we worked with the county staff to, you know, find the right place to put a new access and make sure it was safe. Okay, so, so we then went forward with the land use application. We believe that what we proposed was absolutely consistent with what we discussed with staff. Staff never said anything to us about it until they just denied it several months later. And the denial that they issued didn't even address the relevant criteria. Now, the staff's job, or, you know, the, there are two lists of things you can do in the EFU zone. One of them is this commercial activity. What the local government's job is to do is to take the application, apply the criteria for the permit that the applicant's asking for, and make a decision based on those criteria. Not what the courts have said is some other predilection of the decision maker. Which would include saying, oh, you applied for this permit. We'd rather you did this other thing with your land, or we'd rather you have this other permit. The staff decision that we got didn't apply the criteria. All it said was, this isn't typically what we see for commercial activity, so we're not going to approve it. So I called the planning staff. We had several conversations. What happened? You know, what, why, why, why is this result so different than we thought was going to happen? And also in those decisions, there were some real factual inaccuracies. For example, the idea that, well, this isn't really being farmed. Which, you know, you heard Mr. Jones explain all the, all their efforts to rehabilitate the farm and all, and that everything that can be farmed is being farmed now, okay? So I said, what if we asked for reconsideration? We'll give you a new package of evidence. What kind of evidence would you like to see that would make you feel more comfortable with this? And I talked with the staff about some specific things we could provide. Evidence of the farming, evidence that this kind of program exists and works in other places. And we, and I know there's been a lot of material in the record and some of the questions that you were asking Commissioner Bethel maybe think that maybe you haven't seen the original application materials and all the supplements that we've provided to address all these questions. I don't expect you to know all the details, but I want you to know that we proactively worked to address all the issues, all the criteria and all the- worked to address all the issues, all the criteria and all the other stuff that staff were raising and to try to resolve any misunderstanding about what was going on. So we went through a reconsideration process. The staff just denied us again, didn't even acknowledge any of the additional evidence that we provided. So Commissioner Willis, when you say, well, this seems adversarial, it's adversarial because we feel like we've exhausted all of our options. And I think this brings me to the farm stand issue because what staff told you a couple of weeks ago is that they recommended a farm stand. That's not accurate. Our understanding was that they supported this commercial activity permit. It wasn't until after they denied the permit, months later, that they said, well, why can't you be a farm stand? Okay? Now, there's two specific reasons for that. Another thing you heard from staff a couple of weeks ago is they don't know why we didn't apply for a farm stand permit. That's not true. We discussed this multiple times orally. I've discussed it multiple times with multiple staff members and it's explicitly in writing to the hearings officer. There's two reasons why we can't be a farm stand. Number one is the income standard. If you're going to be a farm stand, you have to show that 75% of your income, income of retail sales, not income from your farming generally on the property, like what Mr. Jones is saying, he's grown clover, he's sold it wholesale, that's not relevant to the farm stand calculation. Of your retail sales, 75% of it has to come from the sale of farm crops. That's not their business plan. So we don't qualify as a farm stand for that reason. The second reason is the building. You are very constrained in the kind of building that you can use for a farm stand. It has to be designed for the sale of farm crops. It can't be designed for any other purpose. And there's been litigation over this. There's a specific case out of Multnomah County, Savi Island, where Luba took a very strict view of the building that's allowed. So, so we didn't want there to be a question as to whether this workshop could be built. The Joneses wanted to build this workshop as a multipurpose building that they could use for their farming, that they could also use for their program. So the farm stand wasn't an option. We've certainly thought about other options like private park, for example, like community center. I think the community center, if you're within three miles of the urban growth center, you can't have it. So that would be the issue with that one here. So there's, there's a lot of nuance to these, all these rules. And Chair Cameron, you may remember this from your time at the legislature. I mean, basically every session, the legislature tweaks these lists a little bit. And so the law's very complicated. And so we felt like this was the best pathway. Now, in terms of, you know, are we trying to move the law? No, we're not. We're trying to apply the law as it is. The opponents are trying to move the law. And I think that the DLCD, ODA letter proves that. So I, I saw that letter this morning. It's total deja vu for me because this is a repeat of the Stoller winery case eight years ago. What happened there was, you know, Stoller's a well-known, large vineyard, has a wine processing facility. They wanted to build a new standalone tasting room and to have a kind of a broader suite of visitor activities. Now, a winery is another example of a permitted use, like a farm stand. But to qualify as a permitted use winery, you have to have 15 acres of grapes and you have to abide by certain restrictions on, you know, your overall operations. What Stoller wanted to do was outside of that. So they said, we said, I represented Stoller, we're going to be commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. The county approved it. The Friends of Yanho County opposed it. DLCD and ODA opposed it. They said, well, you're a winery. You can't be something else. You can't have a different category. The courts rejected that argument. Luba rejected that. Court of Appeals rejected. And so now what's going on is the people are trying to take another bite of the apple. They want to change that law and they're trying to use this case for that reason. Same thing happened here locally in Marion County several years ago. There was another winery that I worked with that they wanted to have a tasting room near the Willamette River. They had vineyards in Polk County, but they weren't actually farming the property where they wanted to have the winery. The staff, the Marion County staff opposed it. The hearings officer said, well, no, functionally, you're a winery. You don't meet the winery category because you don't have 15 acres on site. Therefore, we're not going to allow you to be commercial activity. We took it to your predecessors, Board of Commissioners, and you reversed that. Or the board, our board reversed that, said, no, you meet the criteria for commercial activity. And this is, this is the same, this is the same thing. And the arguments that the opponents are making and that the staff have made to try to distinguish between, you know, being a customer or supplier of farmers versus serving children and families, those are the same arguments that the opponents made in the Stoller case. They said, you have to apply this city of Sandy case, which is where the county's specific, you know, customer supplier and essential to the product, so they have those four standards. That's where they come from. 1994 Luba decision. They said, Stoller needs to meet these Sandy standards and they're not a customer or a supplier of farm uses because they're serving tourists. They're not serving farmers. The courts rejected that. They said, no, it doesn't matter who specifically is transacting business. What matters is whether the commercial activity is closely tied to farming and it enhances the local farm community. That's been the standard for 30 years under the case law and the courts reiterate it. And so what the staff is saying, what the hearings officer said, those are arguments that have been rejected and they don't even acknowledge that. The hearing, I mean, I had a lengthy discussion with the hearings officer about all this case law and her decision doesn't even acknowledge these more recent cases. Instead, it relies on this 1994 city of Sandy case, which has been essentially overturned, and an even older case from 1979. And DLCD's letter says the same thing. They say, oh, well, multiple cases say you can't do this. Well, those are the old cases and they're conveniently forgetting that.
Sorry. So which case overturns Sandy?
Friends of Yanho County v Yanho County.
Okay.
And so, I mean, that's kind of a long-winded response, but the point is that these four standards, these are local standards. This is not the state law anymore. And so you have the authority to interpret them. And we've provided multiple rationales for why we meet that customer supplier standard. There's the supplying long-term workforce, which you've talked about. The other thing is that the program is designed to utilize the crops that are being grown on the property and that are being grown on the surrounding farms. As part of that reconsideration process, we provided very detailed descriptions of how every element of what the Joneses are trying to do in this program relies on these local farm crops. So, you know, we've provided multiple means by which we meet these standards. And, and it's, you know, you have the ability to interpret them in a way that says we meet these standards.
So I'm going to ask you the same question. So the commercial activity must be primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses. If I want to have a Ford dealership that sells pickup trucks to farmers, and that's my whole business, I sell pickup trucks to farmers, how do you distinguish that commercial activity in EFU from another type of commercial activity? Where would you draw the line?
Yeah. So that's Craven v Jackson County. That's 1989 Supreme Court decision. They made that same point. Well, what if you have a grocery store on farmland, right? Farmers need groceries just like anybody else. They're saying it's not closely tied enough to the farming on the property. And the Friends of Yanho County, the Stoller case goes farther. What they say is that, you know, you can't have the tail wagging the duck, right? You have to be primarily farm, a farm or related to farming and then the other commercial activity is supplemental to that. And that's what's going on here. This is primarily a farm, as Mr. Jones described, and these commercial activities that they're hoping to do with the program are, you know, are incidental to that broader farming that's going on. So, so that's the standard. It's the, you know, are you primarily farming or related to farm use versus something that just happens to supply, so it's far farms. And, and actually also Commissioner Willis, that's the Sandy case too, because the Sandy case was about this store, this retail store that was located on farmland outside of the city of Sandy. And they were selling supplies, not, actually, I think trucks might actually have been one of the items. And mailbox services and various things. And so the court was trying to figure out how to get its arms around that and that's how they came up with this customer or supplier thing. But more recently, the, the courts have said, no, that's, that's really limited to the facts of that case. When you have a store, you have to be primarily about serving farmers and not serving the general public, right? But that doesn't apply when you're talking about, and, and the Stoller case, of course, was about, you know, wine tasting, visitor activity. Same thing here where you're primarily a farm, you're farming and incidental to that, you have this program where you're helping to teach other people about farming.
And how would you determine whether something's incidental? Would it be by revenue? So if you make most of your revenue farming and not much of your revenue from your other activities, that makes it incidental? Would it be by, I mean, how, how would you decide?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the, the courts haven't specifically used a revenue standard. And I think that's important because there are certain uses that do have income standards, like farm stand, as we discussed. A winery is another one. You got a wine, if you're a permitted use winery, you have to make, you know, 75% of your retail income from sales of wine and not sales of other stuff. So when the legislature and when the local governments want to impose an income standard, they know how to do that explicitly. There is no income standard attached to the commercial activity use. And, you know, of course, that was the hearings officer's reasoning.
So how would you, how would you decide whether something's, like in my, in my truck case where I'm selling trucks, right? How, how do you decide whether it's incidental or not?
Well, I think if, if it looks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's a duck. I mean, and, and in this case, it's clear that, you know, it looks like a farm, it operates like a farm, it is a farm. I, I, I think it has to be a case by case, you know, when you see it.
Okay. But, but like, let's, let's say I have 100 acres and I put an amusement park on five of the acres and I farm the other 95 acres. And let's say my amusement park's really successful and I make a million dollars in the amusement park and my farming, I'm a pretty bad farmer.
Right.
I make $100,000 farming. Which one is incidental? Like, how do you decide, right? Because, because it can't just be like, well, I, I like Mr. Jones. And I, I, I do. I think educating kids is really important, especially, I'm a big supporter of agriculture. But, but if the courts are going to do this, if Luba's going to uphold our decision or if we're going to make a decision that's defensible, like how do we decide what's incidental and what's not?
Right. Yeah. Well, there's three standards. There's, you know, are, are you, you know, related to local agriculture? Are you enhancing the local agricultural community? And is the commercial activity incidental? So in your amusement park example, it's not related to farming, it's just a generic amusement park. I think, you know, we've gone to great lengths to describe how this program is very closely related to farming. So, so that's the distinction that I will make there.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Go ahead, Jane.
Can you make sure these people are making their area?
Yeah, sure. You alluded to a case that the hearings officer referred to, the city of Sandy, as being overruled or overturned. Is that by the Court of Appeals case?
I believe it's the Luba decision in Stoller. And, and, you know, overturned might be.
So that wasn't actually a correct word to use?
That might not be the correct word. What they said is that it's limited to the facts of that case and it's not the standard.
Right. And, and just for the board's information, I do have a slight different reading of that case than applicant's attorney. I think what Luba said in that case was that the facts were different, as you just said, and so they weren't going to look at that standard. They had a different issue they were addressing. So, but I just did want to put on the record that case, that she cited was not overturned.
Well, there's another, there's another case. There's Hebenfeld v Polk County, which is from, I believe, 2003, and, and which they, they do not apply the Sandy standards. And they say the standard is, are you, you know, related to farming and are you enhancing the local agricultural community? So the fact is, is that the courts have not applied the Sandy standard in 35 years.
Yeah. I just think in front of this, this board, this quasi-judicial body, they need to have the correct information regarding the status of case law.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I, I think the, the, the key point is that, you know, customer supplier, that's not state law. That's a low, it's a purely local standard. You have discretion as to how you interpret that.
Okay. Good. All right.
And?
Michael, you good?
Let me just say one more thing to address kind of the scope of this proceeding. I, I agree with county count, what I think I understood from county council, that, you know, the scope is about, does this qualify as a commercial activity? My concern is that, you know, the, the activist groups have come in and are trying to raise other issues that we thought were resolved, like is there a traffic problem? Is there going to be impact on surrounding farmers? Both the staff and the hearings officer agreed those were not issues, but what we're seeing in these letters from last few days is folks trying to raise that. And that's a deliberate strategy to try to blow up this process and create confusion and to preserve issues that could be appealed to Luba.
No, I, I just want to say that I'm focused on the criteria of the supplier of farm use. That's, that's all we're talking about here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. We will go to our, and Michael, you were signed up so, in, in support. I'm not going to call you up for that, right? You were with, that's the applicant's representative. So, and I'll go with Eileen Kay first. Eileen? Do you want to come over to the side here, please?
Now, I've been thinking about this a lot. So last night I wrote up an addition to what I had previously submitted, so.
Sure. You can, you can hand it to Jane and she'll make sure we pass it out.
What's her name?
Eileen.
Do you have one?
That's okay.
There's one.
And you've done this before, so you know the drill.
I've been here so long. I was here when Russany Bond was the director of land. Anyway, thank you very much for the hearing, for the record. My name is Eileen Kay. I live in South Marion County. And I'm here today to ask you to deny the conditional use permit being requested on 75 acres of exclusive farm use land in North Marion County. I do feel that approval would set a dangerous precedent. The proposed use does not fit any of the conditional uses allowed in ORS 215 or Marion County Code 17. It looks like the applicant is trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. The proposal sounds like a potential farm stand or possibly an agritourism venue. However, when these categories of uses have been suggested to the applicant, he does not seem willing to revise his application. I have heard the applicant wants a building for classrooms and a large parking area. The permit request states that the profit made on this venture will come from admission fees. Will the fee to enter the property actually be school tuition for a private school? I did talk about this case with Representative Brian Clem and about two issues. One was schools on EFU, which he said that they do not allow any longer, and also about farm to school, which is a huge, wonderful program, which I'll discuss in a minute. North Marion County has some of the most fertile ground in the United States of America. In light of current drought conditions, it would seem prudent that the 75 acres in question be utilized for true agricultural use, such as growing food. I found out about this application by chance while watching your July 7th BOC meeting. I have watched many of your meetings. I'm a WAC, so, since the 1980s, because I live in unincorporated South Marion County and I like to know what's going on. At the July 7th meeting, you asked the difference between what this LLC wants to do versus Baumann's Farm. Two different animals. Baumann's Farm grows its own produce on hundreds of acres, sells it to the public who can enter the property without paying an entrance fee. They do have a large event in the fall, such as the corn maze and the pumpkin patch, and they do charge for that a special fee. Why do I care about this enough to come down here to testify? I have horses, so I'm very protective of farmland, since we horse people need land for hay, pasture, and riding. I'm a longtime member of the Marion County Farm Bureau and also friends of Marion County. I also have a monthly radio show, Keeping Oregon Oregon, focusing on the preservation of farmland. I am speaking for myself today as a horse owner. I have gotten to know Commissioner Cameron a little bit over the past several years and more recently regarding traffic and road issues in my area. And he's always been very responsive immediately and made sure that action was taken quickly in each circumstance. I only know of Commissioner Willis via Zach Salecki, who I adore.
Mutual friend.
And I only know of Commissioner Bethel from mutual friends, Jamila and Selina Miller, but also when you were saved horses during the fire. So I have participated in land use hearings as a volunteer over the past 40 years and have high respect for the Marion County. and have high respect for the Marion County Planning Division staff due to their knowledge, patience, and objectivity. I am hoping that you will have faith in your staff and in the hearings officer when they state that this request for a conditional use permit does not meet the required criteria. Then I just go, you have this in writing, I just go on to talk about the four H F F A. I totally agree. We need young people to get involved in agriculture. And, uh, however, there are already programs to do this. I don't think this application was ready for prime time because they don't have anybody here from F F A. They don't have anybody here from four H. They don't have signed agreements for the plan. There is no plan that I can see except for a private school. I would, uh, my whole work career, I was an investigator, so I do get suspicious, but it just seems like this is gonna be a school with tuition. I, it's just, I don't get what it is. I don't understand what it is. And the, so the, and the farm to school program, the state puts millions of dollars into it. There's a whole position devoted to, to statewide activities at the Department of Ag and the Department of Ed. And, uh, Brian Clem told me, he said that the farmers that, uh, sell to the schools have the kids over. It's local. They have the local kids from their local school come over to their farm to see what, where their food is coming from and all about farming. Let's see, I'll just have a little bit more.
All right.
Oh, I, at the, uh, July seventh meeting, I think you were wondering, you were saying that no farmers were opposed to this, but nobody knew because the, um, uh, area of notification is only seven hundred and fifty feet and the properties out there are so big, there wasn't a lot of notification to farmers. And, um, so a farmer called me for totally an unrelated thing from North Marion County and I go, "Do you know about this?" And he said, "No." So he wrote a little letter of, um, opposition. So, anyway, I just, um, you know, you know that there are these statewide planning goals. Goal three defines agricultural lands. It requires counties to inventory such lands and to reserve and maintain them through farm zoning. So we just wanna be really, really careful about what we allow on farmland.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go down to Jeff Jones and I have Jeff, oh. Sorry, Mr. Jones. I'm just trying to go down to make sure I got the people that are in support, so, okay. Uh, Roger. I remember when our, when our tummies get growling.
He's got snacks.
Commissioner asked me if I had a timer and I said, "No, I'm not gonna do that," but, but...
It's only one fifteen, you have forty-five minutes.
I know. I'm just saying, sometimes...
I have some snack bars in my...
I got one, got it, got it. All right, go ahead, introduce yourself, Roger.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, for the record, my name is, I'm gonna read my, uh, testimony because I always forget something and I wanna make sure I cover all the issues. So please bear with me if my reading gets a drawl and you fall asleep. Uh, for the record, my name is Roger Kay, president of a nonprofit organization, Friends of Marion County. In twenty eighteen, we celebrated our twentieth anniversary, working to protect farmland in Marion County. Our members have served the county for many years, volunteering on the Marion County Planning Commission, serving on work groups with farmers, county planners, and other experts, participating in the Marion County Fair, and other important events that connect our county government with its constituents. We first learned about this case at the initial filing for the permit in December of twenty twenty. I read the application with concern. I was impressed by the county staff and their reasoned findings and conclusion. The applicant requested a reconsideration of the decision and then a hearing before the Marion County hearings officer, which was denied. Again, we were impressed with the hearings officer's decision and expected that this case would end there. Surprisingly, the applicant is now appealing to reverse the hearings officer's decision. We agree with the staff and the hearings officer's decisions and request that the board also deny this application. The board should respect the well-reasoned decisions from the experts for whom you pay and rely upon for advice. On Monday, we submitted a letter to county staff with several attachments. I want to go through these very briefly in case you have not had time to review them. We believe the applicant does not meet the standard for commercial use in conjunction with farm use as a conditional use on farmland. The applicant has offered possible uses for the farm, for example, a farm stand, agritourism, or small mass gathering. The applicant rejected all of these options. Instead, the applicant continues to propose a combination of uses that are not permitted as a conditional use in Marion County Code or state statute. In case you are unaware, there are now more than fifty separate conditional uses on farmland. Instead, the proposed use is a hodgepodge of many uses. By the way, hodgepodge is a word, I looked it up. Farm stands, school, and agritourism, each of which the applicant does not qualify. This is perhaps the reason that the applicant applies these uses together and calls it a, quotes, "program." The proposed program does not qualify as a commercial use in conjunction with farm use under state law. However, we see this use as a theme park. I submitted portions of the websites of the Enchanted Forest Theme Park and the Oregon Garden. These venues charge admission and provide educational opportunities. They are not located on EFU but on commercial and public zone property. Instead of the public, the applicant will charge admission to reservation-only groups, but the revenue sought to sustain the development is primarily by admission fees. The program is not a commu- commercial use in conjunction with farm use, and the county planning director and the hearings officer agreed. It is not a commercial use because of the activities are recreational, including nature walks, wildlife viewing, holiday-themed activities, winter wonderland hikes, and retail sales. All of these activities together comprise the program and are supported by admission fees and not essential to the practice of agriculture. The applicant also fails to describe the scope of these activities and how it relates to agriculture. The applicant doesn't reveal how many events are planned, and therefore, it's not possible to determine the effect on agriculture in the community. Without this information, the county won't know if there will be an increased cost to surrounding farmers. We agree with the hearings officer's decision that the proposal does not comply with Marion County Code seventeen one three six dot zero six zero D one and D four and also R R S two fifteen two eighty-three two A, and we urge the board to deny the application. Thank you so much for listening to our comments today.
Thank you, Roger. Carla. Welcome.
Um, I didn't know about this proposal until very recently, and last night I wrote...
You wanna just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Carla Michelson. I live at one seven two four four Arbor Grove Road Northeast. My part of Arbor Grove Road is, um, listed in Woodburn, Oregon. I live on a one hundred and eighty-five acre farm. My father and my grandfather ran a dairy there for many years, as well as farming alfalfa and grain crops. Uh, my sister and I now own it. We've retired. We're not gamblers, which most farmers are, and we now lease the property to other farmers. And I'm currently a member of the Marion County Planning Commission. I've been on the commission, Joe can correct me, I think sixteen years? Something like that. Uh, but I'm not, I'm not testifying on behalf of them, it's just for me, um, cause I live, I live in the area and, um, I'm not gonna say what I wrote in here because I learned from the lawyer that, um, talking about traffic and those such things are not what we're here to discuss. My, my concern with the proposal, besides the safety issues about traffic, because I live on Arbor Grove Road and you get a lot of, even though you're not like directly there, you get a lot of feedback. Once the, um, once the Newburgh bypass opened, people started using Arbor Grove more to avoid, um, getting weighed and other, other such things. So when, when a new activity arrives, there is a, there is a pushback. But part of my, one, a major concern for me is, normally, uh, an educational facility is not something that you find in excl- um, on EFU. Even, okay, St., for example, my son went to St. Paul High School. They have F F A. They, they have facilities there that they, that they work with. I know because I would buy from their plant sale every year. So when, when you're going to set up a new activity on EFU, I think you have to be very, very careful. We set up the land, I mean, I remember, being old, uh, setting up land use law in the nineteen seventies with the idea of preserving, uh, and protecting farmland. But protecting and preserving farmland doesn't mean farmland isn't eaten up, um, with development. It very much is. So all we really do when we say preserve and protect is we just slow down the rate at which farmland gets eaten up. And if we're going to have a new activity on far- on EFU zones, I think we need to be very, very careful about the kinds of precedents that we set. And despite other testimony, I believe that this would set a precedent. And I am, I am not a person, I mean, I worked for lawyers a long time, but I don't really believe that things should all be, always be settled in courts. But in order to enforce regulation, a lot of times you do have to go to court to find out, um, how you're going to legally define an activity or a place or a zone. I, you know, I, I, I'm kind of in two minds being here because I, he's technically, out in the country, he's still considered my neighbor. I don't like telling my neighbors what to do with their property. I don't like it if they tell me what to do with my property. But, you know, I understand that if we want to maintain a rural environment and maintain agriculture as an industry, you have to have that, you have to sacrifice sometimes. My hope would be, I wanna, I wanna defend the planning staff. I have worked with these people for sixteen years. And sometimes we get proposals that have twenty conditions put on them because they want this person's application to go through and comply with state law. They go out of their way for that. And sometimes I look at those conditions and I wanna say, "Can't you just say no? Whatever happened to no?" So my, my strong belief is that if they couldn't come up with conditions to make this comply with state law, nobody can do it. Because Marion County's planning staff, I have talked to developers all over Oregon, and the planning staff in this county has an excellent reputation and is considered one of the best planning departments in the state. So I don't think they had any particular animus to Miss, Mr. Jones or the application because it is their desire to make these applications work. So I just wanted to say that because I have found the planning staff to be great over all the years that I have been on the planning commission. I would hope, cause I think there's the germ of a really good idea here. I don't have a personal opposition to education or, or bringing students out to, to look at farming, particularly students in inner-city areas where you don't have any concept of how your food is produced or gets to you. But I think they need to go back because that, that education part of it, to me, is a real sticking point. Uh, because it's, it's not included in that very long list that gets added to at every legislative session of what can be allowed in an EFU zone. And most of those things are added to the EFU zone in an effort to con- continue to produce revenue for, for farms. Um, agriculture changes just as much as any, any other industry. And I understand why you want to have different revenue streams. Monoculture isn't always the greatest, greatest, um, farm practice. So I understand why there, you want to have multiple income streams in a, in a, on a farm. Because if one, if something fails, then you have something else to fall back on. So I would hope that there is still the possibility that Mr. Jones could go back to the planning division and come up with a proposal that would meet all of the criteria. Because at the moment, I don't think it does. And I'm not going to, um, quote the law, I'm not an attorney. I just worked for them. Um, but I think it's very, I think this is something, though, that would establish a precedent that could be, um, I know I'm getting repetitious and I apologize, but I do think that this would set a precedent, and I don't think we should be doing that without a lot more input from a lot of other people. Farm stands and other, all those activities are, are highly regulated, as they should be, because you're attempting to preserve the agricultural activity on that land. So that's, anyway, I think I'm going to stop while I'm ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, Carla, good to see you. Yep. All right, so that concludes those that are signed up.
Mr. Chair, um, planning has let me know that there is an individual waiting outside. He or she did not sign up. Oh, there we go. Okay, they didn't sign up, but they'd still like to...
Sure.
Get some comments.
I'll go out and fill out the sheet for you. If you introduce yourself and spell your name and your address and I'll put it out here.
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Steven, S T E V N, last name is Willis, W I L L I S.
Great last name.
Yes, no relation, though. I wish Bruce was one of my relations, but... Uh, address is two four one seven, uh, Coral Avenue, right here in Salem, uh, nine seven three oh five.
All right, thank you.
Well, uh, today, I originally just came here to see how, uh, the procedures go and to get my nose into another part of Marion County. My bringing up, uh, is relevant here. I was brought up on a small, real small working farm, five acres, uh, all kinds of animals, all kinds of grub for the animals, all over the place. And I learned from top to bottom. I also have autism as one of my disabilities. And I'll tell ya, working and growing up with animals on farms and my parents being bus drivers, loggers, and farm workers really helped me a lot. I am neither opposed or for this. I am for the people, I am for the land, I am for the best. We're all custodians of our children's futures. And I applaud each one of them for every point that's been... And I applaud each one of them for every point that's been pointed here. Including even your truck thing. That, that's a very valid point though. But as any hardcore farmer knows, at one time or another, we've sold eggs alongside the road on a small stand, apples and that. You can drive anywhere in this country too and still see that happening. It's more about what the criteria's laws are for that. I don't pretend to know what their criteria's are. But I do know that if there is existing gravel, that is hard, extremely hard. I've worked as a laborer to remove such things. That's extremely hard to remove. I wouldn't grant anything more to lay down necessarily. And I do agree with the one lady over here that it is the gentleman's land, but it's also the land to be inherited by the future. So you guys got a difficult job. What I would say though is there should be some way, if his intentions are honest, some way for him to work with the, the planning boards to actually make that dream come true. Teaching the young about agriculture, about how things grow, about animals are very important. You don't just go to the store and buy it, somebody grill it. And it's not a glorious job, never has been. Look at me, I'm forty-five, I, I feel more like I'm eighty on post. But, um, it's not a profitable business. And I, being with my mom, being a full-time bus driver when she was alive, she took many field trips to all over. Uh, one of them that I went with her on, she just took a load of kids to a milking parlor, just down the road, one of our old farm buddies. Kids had a blast. Fees, eh, you get a dangerous thing there because like they said, presidents. And once you let the door open for even two dollars in inflation, all that, you can get up there pretty good and have a good income too. I would encourage, uh, all of you to take the time to think about the land, think about the neighbors. Most importantly, think about what could be done with what the gentleman has in his land and his dream. And help guide him to a better way to properly use the land for his idea of education and agricultural without drastically changing anything in the land, but yet keeping it safe for the reasons he wants to use it for. I'm probably the shortest speaker that you're gonna have.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis, thank you for coming forward, real appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, that concludes our testimony. Just wanna make sure if there's anybody else that did not sign up. Alright, um, we, uh, we can have the applicant come back. Uh, if you wanna come back and say, uh, anything or staff, we'll have staff come back last. You wanna have any comments?
Commissioner, just a couple of quick things. Some of the opponents were suggesting that we haven't coordinated with other programs that, that we might work with in this program and it's not accurate. There's actually, there's a letter from the North Marion FFA in the record talking about how excited they are about this program and how they wanna work with the Joneses. There's another letter from a local school, so there, there certainly has been an effort to, you know, design the program carefully to work with these other groups who, who might benefit from it. So wanted you to be aware of that. And, and second, I just, I wanna say, you know, I, I respect planning staff. I work with local governments all over the state. I think planners have a tough job, you know, they see a high volume of applications a lot of times. They have limited resources, um, the law's complicated and there are political pressures. So I, I totally respect staff and I don't mean to, you know, disparage anyone um, or, or to make this an adversarial process. I mean, if there was a way around it, I certainly would not advise the Joneses or anyone I've worked with, hey, let's go fight about this, you know, we would try to find the pathway to get to yes. You know, that's the way that I like to work, I think that's a responsible way to work. You know, if, if the staff had told us upfront, hey, you know, we don't interpret this commercial activity this way. You know, we think it should be narrow, then we certainly would have rethought this, you know, maybe tried to redesign the program. Or, you know, just pursued a very different process to try to bring the policy issue to you quickly, right? I mean, I think if you look at the record, you can see that, you know, we, we feel like we've done everything possible to show that we meet the standards and to address all the issues that have been raised. And we're here because we don't see an alternative. I, I certainly haven't, I haven't heard one. You know, it's easy to be a critic, it's easy to say, well, you should've done more or different or you should go back and try again, but you know, the burden's on the applicant to do that. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of money. So we're here because we feel like this is the only option we have and, again, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. You went Lindsey.
Lindsey or Joe?
Yeah.
I think Lindsey's on point on this one.
Yep. Did, oh, before we, go ahead Lindsey, but did either of you have questions for Michael? Okay, alright.
I have a question for Lindsey.
Alright.
I'm ready.
Go ahead and reintroduce yourself for the record.
Uh, for the record, Lindsey King, Marion County Planning.
Okay, so Lindsey, um, if we put some conditions on this, could, um, we tighten it up? It looks like some conditions that have been used in different sort of situations are revenue and number of days. Those seem to be like two different options. So, cause it seems like one of the, one of the questions is, and I think, I think this is sort of an interesting question, is, you know, are the products and services essential to the practice of agriculture? And I think having young people grow up to work in agriculture is pretty essential to it, right? And, and I think the applicant's basically making that case, this is really important and we wanna teach these kids about agriculture. And what Mr. Jones said is, um, this isn't about the money. We just, we wanna be able to, to, to make this dream a reality. So taking him at his word, um, it seems to me that if your farm, your actual far, farming, whether it's clover or whatever, is making most of the revenue on your farm, then whatever other activities you're doing could be incidental. Or conversely, if you're bringing kids in, but you're only bringing kids in a certain number of days every year, that also could be incidental to the actual farming. What do you think about one of those ideas as far as allowing this to move forward, but limiting it in a way that, um, we're not drastically changing?
As a condition.
Yeah.
Conditions.
What do you think about that?
As conditions, um, assuming that you find it, uh, that it meets the primary consumer or supplier of farm use criteria and all of the other appropriate criteria, I think that, um, uh, it, it, it could work. I have, uh, some preliminary conditions that I unfortunately didn't bring because they are on my computer. And, uh, basically, I followed along with a mixture of previous commercial use in conjunction with farming, uh, conditions, stuff like, you know, hours, lights, um, if there are any lights outside, sign standards, uh, and then other, some other home occupations. Cause we don't, we've never had a case in this, uh, capacity before. So it was a little difficult to come up with a set of standard conditions to follow along with. But, uh, I don't know it, if that would be allowable per our code. I would defer to legal on that. But I think that we could find something to work with.
Cause I guess in my mind, like when I think about them and I think they have a really good farm and they invite kids in to go have fun at the farm, that's like a very positive thing.
Yes.
And so when I look at this, if they're gonna have a really good farm and they're gonna invite kids in to learn about farming, I think that's a positive thing. So the question is, what I, what I don't think would be appropriate is for this to be, as somebody said, a theme park where they grow some grass next to it, right? It would have to be a farm that the incidental use is kids coming and learning about the farm. So is there a way that, that we could put conditions on it to preserve that?
I don't, I would have to defer.
So just to, to clarify, so they're, I mean, they're seeking a conditional use permit. Um, and one of the criteria is, as you've already noted, that it has to be primarily a customer or supplier of farm use. So you have to make that determination first. And then when you do that, then you can state conditions on it. So the primary quest, I mean, the first question is though, is this a customer or supplier of farm use? What I hear you asking is maybe, can they do something different? Which then I think gets to that other discussion of farm use.
Well, I think the, the question is, can these facts be presented in a way that I can answer yes? And like, I certainly could make the argument, right? I mean, if, if we're bringing kids in to do U-PIC, then yeah, of course, right? Or if, I, I just think it's, I, I think, I think we could come to yes on that. But, but I want to make sure that whatever outcome we come to is the right outcome for the community. So that's sort of my question is, can we, can we, if we were to come to yes, would, would we do it in a way that protected EFU or not blowing the door open for people to do whatever they want? That's sort of my question.
We can add special conditions such as, uh, signee standards, so setbacks, uh, hours of operation, number of people on the property at a time, things like that, if that's what you're just talking about. But as far as a condition to get to a yes, then I don't, I can't answer that question because I don't know.
I'll just, I mean, you can put any conditions you want on a conditional use permit, right? So I think that's, that's, yeah.
So if, if
Did you finish?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, for example, if you want to protect the surrounding farms from any adverse effects of, you know, having children on site and say the farmers are spraying or have, you know, their sprinklers or pesticides or something going, you can have a condition that any buildings or anything associated with that, that use be a hundred feet away from the property lines or two hundred feet from the property lines, much like we have with our farm force zones where you have, if you're putting a primary farm dwelling or a non, or a forced dwelling, you have special setbacks to help alleviate some of the interactions between the farmer forced use and the residential use.
Did you get all your questions, sir? Okay, Commissioner?
Well, there's so much paper up here, I don't even know what I'm, I don't know where to chase this question to ask it with, you know, clarity, I think, so I'm just gonna try to bumble through it. Mr. Jones said that his property is seventy-four and a half acres, but only thirty-five of it, approximately, um, is farmable, clover and winter wheat. So we're trying to determine if a bulk of this is basically farmed land. I guess I wonder what the definition of majority or bulk or whatever the terminology is we're trying to define is.
For farmland?
Where is that wording? So, the commercial activity must be primarily a customer or supplier of farm use. So must be primarily, what's the definition of primarily? When we look at this amount of acreage and determine the layout, he said that there was a portion of it was timberland, a large portion of it is a gravel lot, but thirty-five acres is farmable land. So I'm trying to determine what primary is in this capacity for this specific piece of land and if thirty-five acres is sufficient.
So, uh, Commissioner Bethel, I made, the way I read this is if the commercial activity is bringing kids to the farm, the question is, is that activity, bringing kids to the farm, primarily a, a customer of, or supplier of farm uses? In my interpretation, if I were to get to yes to this, would say, yes, those kids are, in this case, a customer of a farm use. Because they can't learn about a farm on a farm without going to a farm. So, so in this case, the commercial activity is bringing kids to the farm and that would be primarily a customer of a farm use because those kids, in order to have this experience, have to come to the farm to experience it. So that's how I, how I read that, rather than what percentage of the actual land is.
Right.
Well, what if, so I guess in the conditional use, conditions, I mean, we, I mean, he's saying they're gonna farm it. I'm not saying that he's not. But what if in ten years he decides not to farm it? And he still has a giant building that he brings random plants to and makes a school? I guess there's, I have concerns about.
So we did this with, with, uh, an auto body shop in the farm zone, in EFU land, that they, they came to an agreement and said, okay, we're only going to fix farm implements and tractors and that sort of stuff. And, um, if more than fifty percent of our work is non-farm related equipment, then we won't qualify for the conditional use. And, um, we gave them, before I came, the county gave them the conditional use under those conditions. They didn't meet the fifty percent and so the county pulled their conditional use. And they weren't able to run that business anymore.
Okay, that is, if that's
So that's the way it would work. Is you would say, you know, you can do this under these circumstances and if you can't do it, then can't.
Just to go a little bit further back, I think in my history here in seven years, uh, and Joe can attest to this, we, we had conditional use permits that were not really being followed up on and now there's a tickler system that goes back and, and Lindsey, maybe you can share what that looks like from your standpoint now, I know Joe's here. But, um, when we have put on conditional use permits, now there's an audit, uh, program. Or at least there was, a few years ago, we set that going forward, can you?
So we can go back and look at the conditional use permits annually, um, you know, every couple of years, every five years, to make sure that they're still meeting those criterias and essentially, yes, audit the conditional use.
Right.
So if, for example, the automotive repair business that you mentioned had, we hadn't required them to submit documentation the first couple of years, proving that they in fact were repairing farm-related automobiles, then we could go, you know, hypothetically, you could go back after, you know, a couple of years and say, okay, uh, let's make sure that you're still meeting all of those conditions of approval. And if you're not, we can revoke it and then I believe it would just go to a code enforcement if they refuse.
And we did that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yes, super helpful. I have a couple more questions if that's okay. And, well, I'm curious, I, and just so the record shows, we did see all the documentation, but there's a fair amount of it. Oh my gosh. There's so much, but I would like to reread the North Marion FFA letter, um, that you potentially have in that packet. But also, maybe while you're flipping through looking for that, can you describe the noticing procedures? Because I thought it interesting that one of the public commenters stated that, and this makes sense, seven hundred and fifty feet from proposed change, uh, in this space is, you know, like, two people. If that, if at all. So is there special circumstances in the noticing in farmland to be able to make sure surrounding neighbors are informed? Oh, she found it for me.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Jane.
Um, so I have a, uh, essentially a copy of our notice map and the seven hundred and fifty foot radius, uh, you know, like you said, in the farm zones, is not a lot of properties. I think that maybe eight properties would touch this radius. Seven, okay, yeah, sorry, I was just going based on the photo. But, uh, so the, the noticing is seven hundred and fifty and it gets smaller as you get more urban or more dense. But I, I don't know of any mechanism to increase that or make sure that everybody else knows other than, um, you know, going back to posting it in the newspaper or some sort of, um, online thing or anything like that. But we do notice, um, we have the, the address lists of the notifications and things like that. And so they, they do, it does go out once the decision is made. We don't notice the neighboring properties at the time of application. We notice our state, local, state and federal agencies at the time of application for comments regarding the case. So the, the neighboring properties are not actually noticed until after the decision is made.
That seems odd. That's the law?
That is how Marion County does their land use notifications. I don't know if that is law or not, but that is how Marion County does it.
We should look into that.
Yeah, I'd like to really talk about that in the future. Okay, thank you.
You gonna read the letter?
Do you want me to?
I thought that you said.
I wanted to read it, I just wanted to, I'll read it.
Well, it's up to you. I thought that's what you were going to do.
Sure, the, the letters from Tricia Stoddard, the agriculture teacher from North Marion FFA, on, on March 1st, 2021, to whom it may concern. "I'm writing in support of Red Oak Farms and the vision they have for promoting agriculture. I'm the agriculture teacher at North Marion High School in Aurora. I teach students in many aspects of the agriculture industry, including plant science, animal science and natural resources. Along the learning skills in these areas, I also aim to educate the students on the profound impact of agriculture in our community, state and nation. Without it, where would we be? The plan that has been shared with me would greatly impact our agricultural communities in all the surrounding areas. Agriculture is the number one industry in our area and continues to grow. Not only would this farm have a positive impact on their family, but the families of their employees and will become a huge resource for my classroom, along with the St. Paul and Woodburn Ag classrooms as well. You see, agriculture has the largest economic impact in our area and we are always striving to find ways to show the public all the positives and good that we do. Along with, along with all this, it would also provide the area agriculture teachers in public schools an option of how students can become involved in a career of agriculture. This farm would become an opportunity for students to gain valuable hands-on skills that our classroom cannot provide. It would provide opportunities for jobs in the community and a family that would support the continuing efforts of FFA, the largest student-run leadership organization in the world. Thank you for taking the time to provide Red Oaks Farm the opportunity to further our community and world vision of being able to continue feeding the people of our community, state and nation. Sincerely, Tricia Stoddard."
Any other questions for Lindsay or Counselor?
With your permission, I, I know this isn't Joe's show, but we only got him for like a few more weeks before he retires.
You want him up?
Could, could he come up? I'd love to get like the wisdom of the.
What do you mean a few more weeks? It's like days.
Is it days?
Like 31st, isn't it?
Of August.
Oh.
Just.
Oh, he'll be here for us.
You only got, you know, you only got a gray beard like Joe for so long.
For the record, two for tomorrow.
All right, all right, Joe, what do you think of my crazy idea to put conditions on?
I think that that's something you have the full authority to do. I'm not sure how the logistics will work out with the applicant and his representative.
They'd have to agree to him.
They would, they would need, I, I would think that you would make the finding that this is, you've already made, basically said, decided it's a customer supplier of farm use. So you would approve the conditional use, you could, you could direct staff to work with the applicant on conditions to bring back from the order, for, for the order to be adopted.
And, and if it comes back and, and we don't like the conditions or we think that, that this puts the community at risk, we can say no to the order, right? Or no.
You, I don't think you could do that. I think you'd have to, I think you, you could, you could recommend, we, we could actually.
Could we close the hearing and not make a decision and then come back once we see what the conditions would be?
You could do that, but you would need the applicant to, to give you additional time because we're running up against the 150-day time limit.
Okay.
They would agree to give that additional time, we could do that, yes.
Okay. That's why we asked you up here, because you're so smart.
But I can see all the brains just going that way, right?
Yes, definitely.
Lindsay.
He'll have to give me his tie collection.
His tie. His beaver jacket, yeah. Thanks, Joe. So what are you thinking?
Well, that, I think that's, that would be my request is whether the applicants would be amenable to that. So.
What?
So why don't you come up?
Come back, should have returned, all right. Michael, why don't you come up? Or whatever.
You guys, yeah, you guys.
Yeah, you can grab, well, here, one of you can grab this chair over here, Lindsay can move.
I mean, I guess what I would say upfront is we're certainly amenable to conditions. You know, no one's proposed conditions so far, after all this time. The devil's in the details, of course, right? It's, it's tough when.
So here, here's my proposal, is that we would close the hearing and basically say, we want you to work with staff to get conditions and then we'll see those conditions and hopefully approve a conditional use. But you would have to give us additional time. Or you could say, no, we don't want additional time, we want a decision now and, and we'll.
Just to be clear, I don't think that we can close it and then have him come back. I think we have to continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing.
Yeah, requiring an agreement from the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline, have those conversations and then come back.
And, and it could be, I mean, we could talk about right now, if you're like, well, we've been doing this for two years. I don't want to extend it a long time, but I'll give you 10 days or two weeks or whatever the, do you think is reasonable?
So I, I guess I would say the 150-day deadline's already passed.
Except, I think we're at 1:48.
All right, well, I, I'd be interested to see the calculation.
Let's not fight about it, let's just, like, I don't, like.
Well, no, I just.
I mean, you're asking us to give up our rights, although we're entitled to.
That's right.
To, to a decision, to a timely decision.
That's exactly what I'm asking.
And, and with no certainty as to whether the conditions are going to be helpful. I mean, we could very easily get into a situation where the county says, well, come up with some conditions. And then we come up with some conditions, they say, no, I don't like those, come up with some other, go get a farm stand.
And this is what I brought up earlier, where I said, basically, look, if you want to be adversarial, we can go down that route. It's your right, like you said, you have these rights. I've just seen it be successful this other way and, and so that's sort of what I'm proposing.
And we could get into a situation where we work hard in good faith and we come up with the conditions and then we get appeals, right? So it's tough.
Yeah, I understand.
What do you think, Jeff?
I mean, I think we want, we want to work with the county.
Here's another one, I, I want just a great shot of being a good neighbor, getting this done, maybe being able to do this right. And adversarial is not what I'm all about, for sure. And I know this kind of come that way, I get that sometimes those things happen, right? So yeah, what I want is just a really fair shot at, at doing this. And if that's, you know, meeting with the council, giving up our rights to appeal and which is something no lawyer would ever allow.
Yeah, you wouldn't give your right to appeal, you'd just, you'd give us some more time.
Well, as much as you probably hate this, right? I think I'd just like to try to work this out, honestly, like.
How much time do you need, Joe? Two weeks?
I think we could probably give it two weeks.
Two weeks.
It's not 14 days.
He's going to share with you.
Oh, yeah, 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 we can get out of your way, Joe.
No, he's just going to sit.
Yes, I, I think two weeks is reasonable and if you continue the hearing to a specific date, we don't have to re-notice.
Okay. So do you, are you guys okay with that?
Well.
Or no?
I'm at the point, I, I think this, I, I just want to say this because I, I, we'll go back to what kind of motion you want to make. But I'm at the point where, you know, determining whether, it goes back to the item D, determining whether this is farm use is long-term labor with kids. I think it, I, I think it's, it's important for agricultural industry, we're the top-producing agricultural county, finding a way that we could have youth experience that, becoming more of a part of the labor force in the future. I, I, I want to stretch that. I mean, that's what I'm saying is that this is an opportunity to say, yeah, this is farm use. It contributes to farm use. So I'm, I'm saying that I'm leaning towards that criteria D. Obviously, it's, it's something that probably hasn't been challenged yet, but I, I certainly would like to get the opportunity to see if, if that could be the criteria that we would move forward on that. So I'm comfortable saying yes to that. How you want to put conditional uses around, I think that's important, that there's conditions put around the permit. So however, the best way to get there, I'm, I'm leaving that open to you guys. I mean, is that, so we're at the 148-day?
We're at 148 days, yes.
So if we, if we, what are our options here, Joe, based on what he said and what I just said? Or Lindsay, Counselor?
I think what would happen next is you would continue the public hearing to August 11th. In the meantime, it sounds like planning staff would work with Mr. Jones and his attorney to come up with some conditions based on approval criteria. And then if it met with the board's approval at that time, you would vote, you would, you would make a determination whether this is a permissible conditional use subject to these conditions. Does that sound right, Joe?
Correct.
Okay.
Because in the past, typically if, if staff is recommending, I mean, this is opposite, right? This is, they would bring today, we would see those conditions, we would be approving this with those conditions in the record already. So we don't have those conditions, so that's what we need to get to, to that step. And we're saying we want you to come back with those, okay? So what's that motion look like?
I think you would move to continue the public hearing and then Joe said 14 days, which on my calendar is August 11th. The next board session would be August 11th, then you wouldn't have to re-notice.
So it's, it's the, it continues public hearing, requiring an agreement with the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline? And direct staff to come back on August?
11th, yes.
With conditions consistent with what you said?
Yes.
Consistent with that interpretation. Is that clear, Joe? Will, will you accept that, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's where I, hey, whether he wants to accept it or not, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm proposing that because.
It sounds good.
Yeah. So, sorry.
Okay, do you want a motion to that effect?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the public hearing until August 11th, is that right, Jane?
Yes.
Till August 11th. Extending with an agreement, requiring an agreement from the applicant to extend the 150-day decision-making deadline until that date and direct staff to work with the applicant to draft conditions consistent with our discussion this morning.
And I would just add that it appears the applicant has agreed to that extension.
Very good. That's my motion.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question for Jane, maybe Lindsay, and you can just yes or shake your head. So for this, for this conditional uses options that you're going to present, they're going to prepare, are they basically going to go back through the conversations we just had? And then draft potential, potential conditional uses and then present them to Mr. Jones and his attorney? Or are they going to create other conditional uses that are, precedents have been set specifically like with the car dealer or the, whatever it is, the truck company that they spoke of?
I, I can't speak to planning's practice. I would imagine that they will take what the board said and going with the basis that the board finds that the labor, the labor, the criteria has been met because of the labor component, that they would set some boundaries around that. And that would probably be, to your point, that this remained primarily an agricultural land use and then some parameters around the children's activities. And in, in doing that, they probably will look at what precedent they have. I'm not sure there's a lot of precedent out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. So I, I will say this before we take a vote, I just want to say that I want to thank Michael and, and Mr. Jones for being here today and for all our friends that were here today. This has been probably the longest board session that you've been a part of, for sure.
Yes, I'm ready for food and a bathroom break.
Maybe even you and staff for all the work that's being put in. And I, I, I just want to say this, that this is, this is how it works. And appreciate you not giving up. I think, you know, our, our opportunity here to, to hear this and to still move forward is the way it works. So citizen input, testimony, it's all really good and we'll see where it goes from here. So I will call for the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right. So that is done. That concludes our public hearing. I will go back to our normal board session. And we got to read the calendar where we're going to be. Who's, who wants to do that?
Me, it's me, who's heated the consent. Happy to do it, so short.
Good job.
Today is July 28th. We started here this morning at 9:00 a.m., Wednesday, board session, located Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street. And then at 4:00 p.m. today, we have a FEMA briefing for local officials, location Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street. And I just want to clarify real quick for those that are watching, this FEMA briefing for local officials has to do with the San Em Canyon wildfires and not for COVID-19 impacts. It's like, can you guys go outside and talk? August 2nd, Monday, 10:00 a.m., executive session for FOPO, F-O-P-P-O bargaining pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, location Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street. Again, on Monday, August 2nd at 12:00 p.m., work session, CDBG Consolidated Plan Review, Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street. Tuesday, August 3rd, 9:30 a.m., management update, location Commissioners Boardroom, 555 Court Street, 5th floor. Tuesday, August 3rd, 2:00 p.m., City of Salem Ozone Treatment Facility Dedication, location Garin Island, 2700 East San Em Street, Dayton. And then on Wednesday, August 4th at 9:00 a.m., board session, location Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street. Wednesday, August 4th, 12:00 p.m., Woodburn Marion County Meeting, location Metropolis, 347 North Front Street, Woodburn. And August 4th, Wednesday, at 1:15 p.m., there's a BOC CAO meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.6602A-B-D-E-F-H-I, location Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street.
Good job.
Woo, I mean, really, that was a lot of commotion out here to talk over.
Okay.
Local government.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just want to thank everybody for being here, that's, that's just really important. Anything we want to talk about while we're signing this big stack of papers? It's almost as big as HP's Bible he put together for our Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday, how thick it was.
Was that right?
It was 100 pages.
Anything I want to talk about? No.
Well.
Use the restroom, I'm ready to be done.
There you go.
I, I will just say, if anybody's still watching, they're probably asleep, right? That, that I want to say this weekend, we need to make sure that again, we are taking care of those neighbors that maybe have.
Hot.
It's going to be hot, it's going to potentially hit the hundreds, so. Yeah.
Because I just want to say, as much as I hope that, that the end of that process, right, resolves in a way that, that works for our community, I really thought that both the folks for it and against it did a really good job. I think, you know, you have hard questions like this and it's nice when the community can kind of work through them in a constructive way, so.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. I am interested to talk to Lindsay and maybe expand on our noticing opportunities for things like this. I think it's super important for the community to have input and in a, in another role that I serve on in a board capacity, it's just terrible how people can't be engaged because they have no idea what's going on. And then something, this I think is likely going to be generationally impacting. It's, but it's creative and it, it potentially can provide a lot of opportunities and access. Hopefully we can get there, if we are, if we do, I'm super excited to see it evolve, similarly to my excitement over Shemekahas project out there. But being able to bring kids from even as near as Kaiser that are more in an urban area, even though they're neighbors with Ag, it's not like we're going to go walk on our, you know, nursery property and check it out. It's private land, the kids don't have access, so this just expands those horizons. But it does need, I do need it to be farmland, it needs to be farmable and produce crops, for sure.
We didn't have a wildfire update today, we had COVID instead. They, they have really been going to town, ODOT has, on the trees. When I came down yesterday, they had, it's amazing how much they've gotten done since they've changed vendors up on the highway.
Missed one.
I missed one?
Yeah, and we are trucking right along with these housing concepts. Matt Lawyer and myself and Jan and a, and a few other members of our team have created some pretty great opportunities that we'll be presenting briefly on Friday to the state, to Oregon Housing and Community Services and the governor's office to review, mostly short-term housing, to just get people back up there while we work on more long-term concepts. And yesterday I met with the contractors that were hired for Economic Development and Recovery and they were super excited about these, these brainstorm concepts that we have. They were super excited about these, these brainstorm concepts that we have. They even said, well, we, their first priority was housing and then one of the gentlemen said, we are like 500 miles ahead of us. And I said, that's where we want to be in Marion County, is ahead of the curve, because we want folks to get back home.
Could you make sure you share that presentation with us?
Uh, yes. Yeah, I don't know how we will do that.
You can email it.
Um, yeah. I think, I think the plan really is, is to have a work session in the very near future as we, because we're jumping through every hoop and hurdle that the state of Oregon could